I'd like to call the August 17th, 2021 Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners Meeting to Order. We'll start with Agenda Item 1A. Role call. The clerk, please call the board.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Kerners.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Present.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Very good. We do have a quorum with all seven county commissioners present in the chamber. I'll turn it now over to Commissioner MacBernard for the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you'd please join us in rising.
Mr. Mayor, with your approval, I'd like to do two separate moments of silence.
Please.
The first moment of silence will be dedicated to three cops who died of COVID-19. One is from Lee County Sheriff's Officer Deputy Steve Mazada, West Palm Beach PD Officer Robert Williams, and Sumter County Sheriff's Deputy Michael Taylor. Please observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you. The second moment of silence, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, will be to the victims and families of Haiti, the victims who have been affected by the earthquake. Haiti's dealing with a quadfecta of events that has transpired in the past month. First, you had the assassination of President Joffrey Martin. Second, there's a worsening coronavirus in Haiti. Third, Haiti's been hit with hurricanes, and most recently, as of yesterday, Tropical Storm Grace. And also on Saturday, the most powerful earthquake in the history of Haiti, whereas according to the Civil Protection Agency, 1,419 people had died and over 6,000 people have been wounded. A moment of silence, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, for the moment of silence, for leading us in the pledge. Our thoughts and prayers remain with the country of Haiti as they battle difficult circumstances on all fronts and those that we have lost to COVID-19. We'll move now to Agenda Item 2, additions, deletions, and substitutions. Madam Administrator?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. On page 13, 3B2, that date, we have stricken the May 5th, 2021 Comprehensive Plan from the meeting date and meeting time for the clerk. On page 80, 3CC1, has been, language for the motion has been modified. Page 86, 3HH1, also has been modified, and that is just a correction of a name. On page 91, 5C1, public hearing, has been deleted until the 26th meeting for the zoning meeting for this month. That concludes the add and delete sheet.
Very good. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth and second by Commissioner Bernard to adopt the agenda as amended. There's no further comments from members of the public or members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? The agenda is adopted as amended. We'll go now to our consent agenda, which starts on page 13. Is there any commissioner that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull Item 3B3, specifically Item O of 3B3.
3B3, Item O. Are there any other commissioners that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? We'll take up Agenda Item 3B3O.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval to consent agenda, less 3B3. Do we need to read into the record the changes on 3C5? Or is that?
3C5.
Incorporate that.
All right. What are the changes of 3C5?
All right. We had two bid tabulations, and there were some recalculations on those. It was an increase of $24,967 on Item 15, and an increase of $167,808 on Item 17.
Are you reading from an email published by David Ricks?
That's correct.
Does that change the form and substance of the item on 3C5? All right.
Just to clarify for the board, that was, Mr. Ricks provided that as information. There weren't changes to it. The information you have stands.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Very good. So Vice Mayor Weinroth has moved the consent agenda forward absent Item 3B3-0, or O, rather. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, second by Commissioner Bernard. Are there any comments from members of the public on the consent agenda absent Item 3B3O? Members of the board, all in favor? All opposed? The consent agenda passes as published, absent Item 3B3O, which I'm trying to locate now. All right. So this is under Clerk of the Circuit, Court and Comptroller. So we'll probably need some backup on this. Just give me one moment.
Mr. Mayor, there are limited backup on it, so it's part of the...
Is that part of the reason why it's being pulled?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized, sir.
You know, I just saw the item. I'd like to get a little bit more information on it, and so that way we can make the right decision on this item.
Very good. Madam Assistant Administrator, would you mind giving us an overview and some backup on this?
Sure. That would be my pleasure. Nancy Bolton, Assistant County Administrator. This is the contract with the county's contracted broker, Arthur J. Gallagher, for property and casualty insurance. Arthur J. Gallagher, we issued a request for proposal earlier this year. There were two responsive, responsible proposals evaluated by the selection committee. One was Arthur J. Gallagher. The other was Brown &amp; Brown Insurance Brokerage Firms. Both are very, well-respected in the industry, very, you know, very experienced. The county has been with Arthur J. Gallagher for many years, but it is important, of course, to, you know, pursue alternatives. Arthur J. Gallagher was unanimously retained as the contracted broker based on their location in Palm Beach County. The broker is located in Boca. Brown &amp; Brown's broker is up around Daytona Beach. Also, you know, Michelle is her name. She's very, very qualified. But as you know, we have a $2 billion property, total insured values of our property. We live in a cat-prone area, so hurricanes love to tag us. And so we need a broker that is internationally recognized, internationally connected, so that we can compete against other public agencies with real estate risk here in Palm Beach County, such as the, you know, the school board. And we want our buildings insured. So that's why we look for an international broker. I think Arthur J. Gallagher is ranked third or fourth in the world. And it was unanimous decision. And we do have Brown &amp; Brown, so you know, for using, we do use Brown &amp; Brown affiliates for our third-party administration, for both workers' comp and for property and casualty, or for, excuse me, liability, third-party administration. So we do actually use both of those companies on our business. So that's kind of a nutshell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question, if you don't mind.
Sure. You have the floor.
Just, how long have we used, I just want to know, how long have we used Arthur J. Gallagher?
Arthur J. Gallagher has been the contracted broker for many years. I think, I'm not sure when, I think it might have been in the 90s that we first contracted with them, perhaps before. I can't get that specific information.
So, in the 90s?
I think so.
And do we have a, because I know in the backup, it didn't have the scoring. Do we have, like, the scoring in terms of how close it was and what's the difference in cost?
Sure. We do have the scoring. The cost of their commissions is paid by the carriers, and it's capped at a certain amount. And we do have the scoring. The scoring was not particular, I mean, it wasn't very close. My recollection, that meeting was a couple of, you know, it was several weeks ago, but I believe the scoring differed more than 10 or 15 points. And it was a unanimous decision, I recall.
Okay. I think we have other questions.
Very good. We do have some comments by members of the public, but the board has some questions. We'll go to Vice Mayor Weinroth and the Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you. Procedurally, Madam Administrator, I'm a little confused by the fact, is she around?
Oh.
No. All right. Well, then, the assistant.
Sure.
I'm a little confused that this is buried in the agenda with very little backup and wasn't part of our conversations during the agenda review. It seems something as substantial as this should at least have had a little more notice. I'm going to ask that this be deferred and that we get a presentation on it.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to move this to our next agenda.
Very good. There's a motion been made by Vice Mayor Weinroth to table this item to the next Board of County Commissioners meeting. Is there a second? Commissioner Sacks has seconded the motion, and then we'll recognize Commissioner Sacks. Did you want to make any comments beyond that? Very good. We'll move to public comment.
Mr. Mayor, we do have two public comment cards. We have Aaron Creo, followed by Matt Montgomery.
This would be on the postponement.
On the postponement.
Yes, on the postponement. But I'll give some wide latitude here. So you recognize her for three minutes.
Good morning. Is it okay for me to remove my mask while I'm here at the dais?
Sure. If it helps us hear, yes. And I, it helps me.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Matt Montgomery, and I am the Executive Vice President of Brown &amp; Brown Pria, the public sector practice here in the state of Florida. Quickly, by way of background, the public sector practice for Brown &amp; Brown in the state is one of the preeminent public entity insurance brokerage houses in the state of Florida. We have about 125 cities, counties, and school boards around the state, and that includes large accounts such as the city of Miami, city of Fort Lauderdale, city of Jacksonville, and the state of Florida. As was mentioned by the Deputy County Administrator, we were one of the two respondents to the bid, and the scoring, the precise scoring on the bid was 419 to Arthur J. Gallagher and 394 points for my firm, Brown &amp; Brown. I am asking you today to respectfully change course on the decision, which is presented to you by the staff, for a few important reasons. First...
Just so you're aware, we're speaking to the motion to postpone this, but there will be an opportunity.
Okay.
As long, just give me one second. As long as there's the ability for us to ask questions, because I know there's a pending, or I assume this was done by an RFP process. Did you pause this time? Can you pause this time, please?
There was an appeal. There was an appeal process. It should not be appealed in the board at this meeting.
Okay. Can you say that into the record so that the rest of the board can hear it?
This went through our normal process. There is a time to appeal. It is my understanding that Brown &amp; Brown did not utilize that appeal process.
Okay.
And that's, that's when we would go through the normal process of hearing their appeal, making a determination on whether the appeal was valid or not. And so it is always up to this board to make those decisions on who we contract with at the end of the day. But the process, it followed the normal process. He did not appeal.
Sure. He was just stating what the raw score was, and the staff wasn't able to give us that information here today. So it's something that I benefited from, and certainly the board is empowered to choose who they would like to choose ultimately. So what is the ultimate objection to him continuing to speak?
No, I don't have an objection to him.
I have no objection to him speaking. I just wanted the board to know this went through our normal process. There is an appeal for people that don't get selected, firms don't get selected, and that, that appeal process was not utilized. I just wanted the board to be aware of that.
And there may not be any objection by Brown &amp; Brown to the evaluation itself, but that's for a different day. Just give me one more second. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, this is not about whether or not Brown &amp; Brown appealed. This is, we received a document that just basically didn't provide us any information regarding the whole RFP process. So we're, this is our legislative right to, before we make that award, and that's what we're doing. So whether or not they appealed or not, this is our decision. And there's a motion for us to postpone the item so now we can get more information, and so we can make a final decision as a board. Whether or not they appeal, that's their decision.
So just so you're clear, sir, is it Matthew?
Yes, sir.
Matthew, the motion before the board is to postpone this to the next publicly noticed Board of County Commissioners meeting, where presumably we'll receive more information from administration on what happened here, and then we can make a more informed decision. So if you can keep your comments as to whether we should postpone this or take it up today, we, the board would appreciate it, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I filled out the speaker card to talk about the item which was pulled. As to whether this item should be deferred to the next meeting, I would leave that up to you and your staff. I would say that, at the end of the day, if I'm going to have three minutes to speak today, or three minutes to speak at the next meeting, those may be impactful comments. And if you will permit me, I could make some additional comments, which may help you decide whether this needs to be pushed or not.
Okay.
But I want to be deferential to you and your process.
Mr. Mayor, I think that this is an item that I don't, I think we should just speak on the motion to postpone and not the actual item, and then we can take it up at that, at the time when we, we can, you can speak on it at the next meeting.
I agree with Commissioner Bernard. The reason is, is that the motion pending before the board is to postpone, and we need to make a decision on that. But more importantly than that, there are rights here involved, both between Gallagher and Brown, that are substantive, and that we need to be able to evaluate in a fair way. So we're not here on the actual RFP itself, so I don't want to give either side too much latitude to advocate for themselves before this board until the motion is right before the board, which will be the next meeting. So if you have any thoughts on whether we should postpone this or take a vote today, please limit your remaining time to that issue alone.
I, you know, I don't believe it needs to be postponed, but I support your decision. And just for the record, you have another speaker card from my colleague, Erin Creedy, who was intending to speak on the item, not the motion to postpone, and so she will yield her time as you guys make a decision.
Understood. Thank you very much, sir.
I appreciate it.
We appreciate your presence here today. Did anyone have any questions of him at this time? All right. So I think that concludes comments by members of the public. Do we have a date for the next county commission meeting that's readily available?
Our next meeting date is September 14th.
Okay. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Just sort of a point of order on Robert's rules of order governing debate in the elected body. Typically, you hear a presentation from staff. You ask staff those questions. Then you hear a public comment. Then a motion is made, so that the motion, so that the people who came here to spend their time to speak can actually speak on the item, and then we can decide how to make the motion to move forward. That would be the proper conduct of governing debate in an item like this. And I'd like to ask that we keep that procedure process in mind moving forward.
I agree with Commissioner McKinley. As a custom, we typically do motions on the relevant agenda item after the conclusion of testimony, certainly by members of the public. I was presented with a motion that I don't think anyone objected to at that time by Vice Mayor Weinroth, and that's why the motion's pending before the board now, prior to the substantive conversation. But we'll keep that in mind moving forward, Commissioner McKinley. And so there is a motion made by Commissioner, Vice Mayor Weinroth, to postpone this agenda item to September 14th, 2021. It was seconded by Commissioner Sacks. Are there further comments by members of the board to the pending motion? All in favor? All opposed? The postponement passes seven to zero, and we'll look to learn more about this on the days between now and then, and as long as we're allowed to talk to administration about it privately. I know that's an RFP, so should we, are we able to talk with you about it, or should we wait until the public hearing?
Yes, you can talk to me about it.
Okay, very good. So I would encourage all of our colleagues to make inquiry, and then we'll get some public information as well on the 14th. Thank you for everyone's patience here today on this item. Vice Mayor Weinroth?
Thank you. Just for clarification to our legal counsel, can we entertain any conversations with the two bidders on this at this point, or that's, we're in a cone of silence?
Well, it did come before the board for approval today, so Nancy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because you know the steps of this particular RFP process and what was committed to in there, but it would, it's, it would have been awarded today conceivably. So I think the decision was made, and you'd be able to speak with other people, but I, I don't have the RFP, and I don't know what the RFP looks like, so...
Yeah, I think, isn't, isn't approval the, the trigger that allows, or that closes the cone of silence? We will clarify that for you.
Let me recognize the administrator.
Once, once this board makes a decision on an item that's under the cone of silence, then it's over, the cone of silence. And you did not make that decision today. You postponed. And so come August 14th, I'm sorry, September 14th, and you make a decision, then the cone of silence ends. But at this point, it does not end.
So the applicant should not be making any proactive attempts to communicate with members of the board.
Unless it's in writing. They can communicate in writing to all of the board.
Very good. And I just, I never said this during the debate portion, but I have my concerns about this coming before the board and the way that it came. There is no information. I know that there's a lot of stuff on our agenda, but I would appreciate this time to learn more about this important item. So thank you. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would also like to have staff provide for all of us the information upon which you relied in making the decision, so that we have, we don't have to depend solely on the, on the two applicants. So if we could, and if that's proper, I think it would be smart for us to have all the documentation upon which you made your decision, so that we can also have that in front of us before we make our decision in September. Is that, is that all right, Mayor?
Yes, because there were some comments made about the length of time that Gallagher has served. I think it's 30-something years since the 90s, and it was seen as a positive. And I appreciate their service, but if, you know, there's also the concept of new blood and new energy in our system of government. And if the, if the evaluation committee's looking at, you know, constant service in 35 years is a positive, I can tell you that it's probably not the way that I'm going to look at it when this finally comes before the board.
So in fact, they will provide all of the commissioners the documentation upon which they relied upon making their decision.
That's absolutely...
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you. And thank you.
All right. Well, that concludes the consent agenda. Thank you for everyone's patience. We'll go now to special presentations, which is found on page 87 of the agenda, Agenda Item 4A, COVID-19 update by Dr. Alonzo and county staff. All right. We have the full team assembled. We have Dr. Alonzo from the Florida Department of Health, Mary Blakeney from Department of, or Division of Emergency Management, and she's our emergency manager. And then Darcy Davis from the Healthcare District, all which have been amazing partners to the county as we continue our combat against COVID-19. So I'll recognize the group as a whole, and I assume we'll start with Dr. Alonzo.
Good morning. I've got a spacer on my mask. If you all can hear me okay.
Yep.
I will try not to mumble. Okay. Very happy to be here. Good morning, County Mayor.
Morning.
Mayor Kerners. Good morning, Vice Mayor, Administrator Baker, and to the rest of the commission. As usual, it is my pleasure to be here. I hope I can share some useful and important information as we see our COVID numbers increasing quite drastically. I will start with our general graph here showing our huge increase that we have, beginning at the end of, come on, where is it? At the end of June, June 28th, this started rising very, very quickly. The line that you see here is a complete vertical line. In terms of significance, a vertical line that, like that, is very dangerous to the community and to everyone involved, because it doesn't give the community time to adjust for those huge increases that we started seeing. And I will show you that as we go through our numbers. So the rest of the country is seeing a slight little decrease here. The highest number was a few days ago, and then we've had a little bit of a dip in the next couple of days. But as you can see, these numbers on this graph have had spikes many times, but however, we expect that this is going to continue to go up the way the numbers look. The number of deaths also wrote, decreased just a slight amount in the last 30 days, and we are going to show all those graphs for our particular data here in Palm Beach County. At this point, in the, in the, in the United States, we have 72.1% of adults with at least one vaccine, and only 50% that have completed the series. That's when you have protection against the virus. We remain on a high level throughout the country, but we are seeing some counties decrease a little bit on some parts of the map. So there is a glimpse of hope that maybe this will not get as high as it was in January. But the way things looking here in Palm Beach County, I don't feel very comfortable in even thinking that. So let me tell you why. We go to the next slide. You can see that our positivity, we were way down in the 2%, 2.9% at one point at the beginning of June. We had been below five since May 5th. We were very happy, and we were actually had decreased from high, had gone down to moderate, and we were hoping to remain in that 2% and be able to go down to low. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. As you see here, towards the end of June, it began to rise just by a little bit, and then it rose very rapidly. We are now at 17.8%, way above the 10% that is critical, and definitely below the 5% where you can start having significant relaxation in terms of the virus and, and people getting sick and going to the hospital. So it's been very significant, and one of the ways that the CDC and we're looking is looking at cases per 100,000 of the population, and we're at 616 per 100,000. So that gives you an idea in terms of the population where you're living, as opposed to just the numbers. This graph to the right is very significant. This is our new cases per week. So back in our first increase that we had in July, our numbers went up to 17,000 in that month. But our cases per day only went up to 5,000. During the peak of the, during the peak of the pandemic in January, our maximum number of cases per week was 6,000. So little... in January, our maximum number of cases per week was 6,000, so little under 1,000 per day. Look at this line now. We are at 9,000 per week. We have over 1,000 cases per day. That means that there's very, very wide community spread, and that people are getting sick and people are being hospitalized. So this graph, to me, is more significant than just the number of cases that we, that we are seeing. So I think this is very significant. I want you to remember this graph. The other graph that we also utilize in terms of our number of cases is a graph, is a map that we utilize by census tracts, so that the municipalities can look at their community. This is what it looked like on the week, the week before that we sent. And you see that we had to add a new number that was that bright red. Now, we've had to add another number, because this little box here that was in the 76 to 90 is now 91 to 105. And this one out west of Militar, west of 441, in the Delray, Boynton area, has gone up to 106 to 125 cases per week. So you also see that the area out in Belgrade has increased, and there's a lot of red and brown. If you remember, in my last meeting, I showed you the map in June that was really almost clear, very, very few spots. So very significant increases, and again, very rapidly, not giving the community and the institutions the ability to kind of catch up with what's going on. Here also is the Florida versus Palm Beach County. Florida's positivity rate is now 18.5, which is very high. The whole state is in red, I will show you that. But for the first time, Palm Beach County daily positivity has gone above that of Florida. Oops, that doesn't help. You don't have magic vision to watch, see what I'm seeing here, okay? So there you see that, this is what I'm talking about, for the first time, that, does this thing not work for me? It just doesn't like the light blue. But anyway, you can see the two numbers, the 19.04 for Palm Beach County, and the 18.50 for the state. This is the map of Florida, pretty self-evident. And you can see that the three numbers that we have are high, substantial, moderate, and then low. We had been in substantial ahead of southeast, and we were the first county to turn yellow under moderate out of the five metros at the end of June. So big, big difference. Now we're all back to high, at very significant numbers. This is all happening very much as a result of the Delta variant. A variant is nothing more than a mutation on a virus, which all viruses do. It is not uncommon. What has brought so much attention to this particular variant, one, that it's 60% more infectious, it's easier to catch, it produces more virus, both in your nasal cavity, as well as the back of your throat where the virus first comes in. And therefore, because there's more virus within the nasal cavity and within the oral section, that when you breathe, or shout, or talk, it's much easier for that virus to go out and attack whoever is around them. The other significant part about this virus is that it's making more breakthrough cases. And what that means is that people who have been immunized, it is possible for them to then get reinfected with the virus. There's a lot of talk about booster shots. Right now, the boosters have been approved for those people who are severely immunized, immunized, compromised, in terms of people with organ transplant, cancer treatment patients, and people who are deemed very suppressed by their physicians. So that is available now, and that's been made available for people to get the booster shot, if you fall in that category. I would suggest that if you don't fall in that category, that you allow the vaccine for those who do fit in that category. But this is the significant part, and as you can see here, it's gone up to 93.3%. So it's been continuing to rise and to take over. The danger in terms of variant is that once this variant has taken control and is the predominant virus, will it then get to the point that it mutates sufficient that the vaccine will not work? At this point, the vaccine is working against all of the variants that we have in the United States. So that's a good thing. But we have to keep a close eye on this variant to see that something doesn't happen that makes it not resistant to the vaccine. In that case, a new vaccine has to be created to specifically deal with that particular variant. All these variants are still the coronavirus. So I don't want people misstating that we have a new virus. It's still the coronavirus, it's still a SARS virus, and that's important that everybody recognize that. This graph now has to do with our vaccination. And what you see here is that for Palm Beach County, we have 11% of the population over the age of 12 that has been, has had one dose. That means those are people who either got only one dose and haven't come back for the second one, or that they just started the series and they only have the first dose. 58% of our population above the age of 12 have completed their two vaccines, so they have protection for the two vaccines. The total vaccinated is what, the terminology that's used to add up the first and those who have completed. So we have 69% of our population has total vaccination. That 69%, I've said before, is a little bit misleading, because that number includes all those people of 65 and older who have 80 and 90%. Okay? So that number, I think we need to keep our eye on the 58%. But again, the older folks, as you can see on this graph, have very high, up to 90%. The interesting part, and the hopeful part, is that these two lines, the 12 to 19, that's the high school age, and the 20 to 29, which are the ones that are very actively out, well, some of these 19-year-olds are very actively out partying also. But these three groups have increased the number of their vaccination, but especially the 12 to 19. Those are the ones that are being brought in with their parents to get vaccinated. A lot of these are the school-aged children. So that's why I chose to look at this cut of 12 to 19 instead of the 12 to 14, that's usually described in the tables that we get. So this gives us an idea of these younger groups. And you can see that the yellow, the 40 to 49, is almost, is above 60%, and the 50 to 59 is actually at 70%. So we're making strides, the only one that's flat. This is the 80-plus. I think most of them have gotten out and gotten the vaccine, and they're very flat. There's no more activity there going in terms of vaccinations. And then the other two, the 60 to 69, and the 70 to 79, again, very high numbers here in the 90s. So we are vaccinating more people, that is good. The only problem is we're not vaccinating fast enough to deal with the virus that is spreading so quickly. So what are we doing in terms of vaccinations and testing? The Department of Health, and I'm not going to talk for the Healthcare District, because Darcy's here, so she'll take that on herself, but we have, we were the only health department, at least in southeast Florida, that continued to do testing and vaccinations. In our Lake Worth Center down in South Wind, we have COVID testing for the public from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m., and we do all ages, over the age of two can be tested. Our Florida Department of Health in Belgrade, since day one, we have been very active there, and we're doing both appointments. There's no appointments needed. They can come in and do COVID testing from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00, and they can have with or without symptoms. There's a lot of worried-well testing. That's taking up spots for people who are really sick and need to be testing. So we're encouraging those people that we see that are constantly coming in to move from the testing line to the vaccination line. And we've been able to do that with some education on some of these folks. Testing against COVID by using testing sites and being tested is pretty much like trying to do birth control with a pregnancy test. Okay? It doesn't make sense. If you want to be protected from the virus, testing you is not going to help you, because that test is only positive or negative at that one moment in time. By the time you walk out, you may have come in contact with a person the day before. And even though your test is saying positive, three or four days from now, you're going to be, I mean, I'm sorry, even if it says negative, in three or four days, you're going to be positive again. So unless you test every single day, this is not the way to try to prevent the spread of the COVID. The way to do it is one and only way right now, and that's to get vaccinated. So the new site that we have, that has been very busy, is a collaboration between the Florida Department of Health, the county, of course, thank you very much for the use of your facility at Mid-County. It's been a great facility, very well organized there, lots of room. We're doing lots of testing with a vendor, CDR Maguire, that has come and is doing both the testing as well as the vaccinations. And again, we're trying to encourage those people to move from one line to the other. In terms of our mobile van, that's been very active also, doing both vaccinations, back-to-school vaccinations, as well as COVID vaccinations, and of course, testing. And we've gone out to businesses, we've gone out to different areas where we think there is movement, especially to some of the businesses that have a lot of the restaurant business in terms of workers. A restaurant can literally have to shut down, not because of the, not because of lack of patrons, but because their staff all get sick. And one of the problems that we're having across the nation is that so many people are out sick, bus drivers, truck deliveries, anything that you can name that requires human bodies to work. Many of the businesses are having to shut down because of so many people being out at the same time. So this creates a whole cascade effect where deliveries can't be given, or people can't get on transportation, things like that. So it's very serious across the whole country. The best site to find your vaccine, besides going to the county website, which is pbcgov.org, is to go to either the site for the Palm Beach County, which is pchd.com, or the www.vaccineswithns.gov. And in there, you can search within the radius of your home, and look at the vaccines that you want, and look at the actual sites that have it in stock, and that you can go get vaccinated. In terms of testing sites, the site is hhs.gov. In addition to this site, which is, this is a, a copy of that page, and as you can see, it gives you very good information, gives you the address when they're open, and of course, all of the government sites that we are running are at no cost. I would recommend anybody who is going to travel not to take their time at one of these sites, because the, most of the places that you're going to go to are going to tell you that the turnaround time now for labs is, could be anywhere between five to seven days, because so many people are testing. So if you're going to travel and you want guarantee on your test result to be in your hands before you go to the airport, I would recommend that those folks go to one of the sites that's charging people for it, and are able to then produce the test to them right there and then. We've had a lot of concerns, especially this weekend, over people actually showing up, and the airlines refusing to allow them to change their sites because they had to wait for the result of the vaccine. So please don't ruin your vacations. Think ahead and make sure you get that test when you need it. In addition to all that, we, these sites are now new. These are being run by vendors, again, South County Civic Center, Gardens Library, the Veterans Affairs is also helping those who are veterans who need to be tested for COVID. With the help of all these sites, we have seen the, the lines not become extremely long, and I think this is helping a lot of folks across the county to be able to both get vaccinated and at the same time, tested if they need it. So additional efforts that we know are coming shortly. We've been working very closely with the county. Thank you for all the work that not only our leadership has done, but also the staff that's been working on this. Todd, Mary, Verdina, thank you very much. But we're going to see monoclonal therapy supported by an FDOH-sponsored site that's going to do a drive-through, and we will be able to treat people for COVID before they get severely ill. This is one of the things that is really tying up the ERs, are people going to the ER to get tested. They shouldn't do that. They should get tested at our sites and allow the ERs to do what they do, which is to do emergency medicine, people who are critically ill. So please, we look forward for that. But if folks are listening, don't use the ER as a testing site. We're also, we have extensive provider education that's going to be needed to do this. That's being supported by the local medical societies to promote COVID monoclonal therapy for those that need it. We're also working on educational promotion at the testing sites to encourage the vaccinations as opposed to testing for, and encouraging to get treated with the monoclonal therapy instead of going to the hospitals and getting sick. We also have an aggressive local multimedia vaccination campaign that will be talked about very soon, and that is very important. That we have some national advertising that's taken place, but I think we need a lot more, and I'm very excited about the campaign that's been put together, that we will soon see. So in a very short summary, we have the Delta, it's very highly transmissible. Hospitalizations at our critical mass capacity right now, and data from recent weeks say, show that the unvaccinated children and younger adults are now account for more than 98% of the COVID hospitalizations. So very important, you do not have to be one of these people in the hospital. Please, get vaccinated for you, your family, and for the whole community, and for the whole medical system that's being stressed out to the max at this point. We need more people to get vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Alonzo. We'll go now to our emergency manager, Mary Blakeney.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. It's good to see you all up there well today. I'm just going to briefly go through the remaining indicators that we are still able to collect through our CPR matrix. And we'll go ahead and start with the positivity, as Dr. Alonzo said earlier. The upper right graph shows the overall positivity rate, which had been increasing, which has been increasing for the last six weeks. We're currently at 7.80%. At this time last year, our overall positivity rate was 13.23%. The lower left-hand graph indicates the positivity rate over the last 10 weeks of testing. As you can see, it's trending upward. The graph, the next one goes to our daily lab positivity. The graph on the upper right shows the daily lab positivity rate since last July. The lower left-hand graph shows our daily lab positivity rate this week averaging 17.8%, which is above the target we look for of 5%. The daily lab positivity rate has been above 5% since July 13th. As it relates to COVID-19 deaths, the graph on the upper right-hand corner shows that our COVID-19-related deaths have remained stable. Our current death rate is 2.17%. The next is our daily med alerts. As you know, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue does a county-wide sample of people with COVID-like illnesses who have symptoms that call 911. Those are put in as med alerts. We can see by the chart in the lower left-hand corner that med alerts have increased. This past week, the average was more than 33 patients a day. Those are the highest numbers since the onset of COVID. And just to also emphasize on the vaccination sites, we continue to encourage our residents to get vaccinated. Working with our Public Affairs Department, we provide an updated list constantly of Working with our Public Affairs Department, we provide an updated list constantly of resources that are on our county websites that individuals can go to for vaccinations. And as Dr. Alonso said, in addition to encouraging residents to get vaccinated, with the increase in testing demands, over the past two weeks, testing resources have been made available through the, through the three new testing locations at Mid-County Senior Center, South County Civic Center, and the Gardens Branch Library. It's important to note that these sites are open seven days a week, from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We anticipate additional sites to potentially come online, and I think Darcy Davis may touch a little bit on that for us in just a moment. But along with our testing numbers increasing, we've also seen an increase of individuals getting vaccinated over the past four weeks. We have vaccinated over 888,000 people in Palm Beach County, which represents 69% of our 12 years and older population. We continue, continue to encourage people to get vaccinated while wearing their masks, washing their hands, and watching their distance. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you so much, Madam Emergency Manager, Darcy Davis, from the Healthcare District.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, Commissioners.
Can you make sure that your microphone's on?
I will. Is it on now?
Yeah, just maybe pull it a little bit closer.
I'll get a little closer.
Thank you.
So I wanted to give you an update on several things that are going on at the Healthcare District. Of course, vaccinations. We have been vaccinating at our nine locally, nine federally qualified health centers since March. We test, oh, sorry, we vaccinate our patients, or patients that come in with symptoms and want to become our patient. We've also had our three mobile units on the street since the end of May, about 80 days now. We've had a partnership with the school district, which has been very successful as we have tried to target that younger population. We've also had fixed locations, so people know where to find us. And then our third vehicle has really been dedicated to the business partners who ask us to come in and help garner support for our presence there, either by giving incentives or just marketing our presence. Through that particular, all of these efforts, we've actually given an average of 70 per day, not quite the numbers we had when we were at the mass sites, but we'll take it. You know, we're, we're doing what we can to get those that are very hesitant to get the vaccine. So we do spend a lot of time with individuals and do some education about the value of the vaccine. In terms of testing, as they've alluded to, we have actually been working with CDR Maguire as well, and anticipate bringing online a drive-through testing site in Belgrade this week. So we will have a drive-through testing site at Lakeside, and we're just working on some final details with CDR Maguire. Also, there's been questions or concerns about testing in the schools. So as you know, our school nurses staff approximately 160 schools across the county. And as of yesterday, we resumed testing. There was some hiccups as it related to getting consent forms from all of the parents so that we could actually do testing. But we will be doing testing, and we started yesterday in the schools. And so we were also, that will also relieve some of the, the pressure on some of these other sites, as they've been referred out for testing and may end up at some of these sites we've just discussed. I wanted to also give you an update on Lakeside. So Lakeside, of course, is our only public hospital in the county, and it, of course, positioned in Belgrade. 72% of our patients are COVID-positive. We have doubled our ICU from six beds to 12 beds, and they are all full. 11 out of 12 of those patients are actually COVID-positive. 91% of those patients are unvaccinated. Currently, as of this morning, we have six holding in our ED. One has been secured for transfer to Orlando Regional. We have not had a local transfer to a Palm Beach County hospital since August 8th. The VA has accepted two of our patients in the last three and four, three or four days. But I think, you know, what's really important, and you know, I'm speaking now as a provider, not just that healthcare safety nut, but as a provider, we don't have any visibility into the ICU beds in the hospital that are accepting COVID-positive patients. So when you look at a dashboard and it says, hey, there's vet, vet availability, that may not be for a COVID-positive patient. So it's very difficult for us when we are looking to rely on the system, which is, you know, as a rural hospital, we always rely on the other hospitals when there's a, you know, something that's above our ability to take care of. We always rely on those other hospitals to transfer a patient. Up until now, it's a great system. It's just that it, there are so many patients, it's overwhelming a lot of the hospitals. And so it's very difficult. In one case in particular, there were, you know, we called 13 hospitals in Palm Beach County, and no one accepted our patient. And she was in the emergency room for several days, being cared for, of course, but she was in the, you know, emergency room for several days until we found a willing hospital who had capacity to take a COVID-positive patient. So, you know, what I, what I would love to see is a system, a, you know, real-time bed availability for COVID-positive patients. You know, we, in a hurricane or an emergency situation, we all, and even today, there is a dashboard that shows available beds. The problem is, it's a little bit deceiving because those aren't beds necessarily available for a COVID-positive patient. So that's all I have, but I'll, I'll wait for questions when you're.
All right. Well, I'm sure we'll have questions from members of the board. And I'll just kick it off by saying that, you know, as I sit here and we look on the past couple of weeks, it's clear to me that we are in the most challenging point of COVID-19 from a public health perspective since the onset of the pandemic. And as we know, and we're very appreciative of Commissioner McKinley's efforts in updating the board and relaying to us her concerns about one particular experience that she was witness to, but a larger, much broader issue about what you term as the lack of visibility into the private healthcare system. And you spoke about your desire to have real-time COVID-bed availability data. Commissioner McKinley has asked through me, the administrator, to consider a state of emergency. And it occurs to me that other jurisdictions benefit from the, this ability to be able to view through an emergency order and directive, the actual capacity of COVID-19 bed availability in their particular jurisdiction. And obviously, this board is able to meet, and this board has been meeting during most of the penancy of COVID-19. But it allows for a declaration of emergency when the board is available to meet through the Board of County Commissioners itself. And so I guess the question that I have to you, and the board should consider this through any motions that Commissioner McKinley wants to make, would that be a benefit to all three of the agencies that are before us today to have an emergency order that in part directs the private healthcare system to convey and transmit data to us regarding COVID-19 bed availability and other capacity concerns?
That would be very useful, and in two ways, not only for the visibility that we need from different sectors, but also for the public to understand the critical point that we are in right now. And I think that this board has made decisions in the past that get that message across to the citizens of Palm Beach County. We are really in a critical point. That very vertical line is not going down for anytime soon. So I think that's a decision, obviously, the board has to make, but it would be very helpful.
Mayor, I just, I just want to share with you that a, a local state of emergency does give us the ability to do a few things, and, and it, it does allow us to be able to limit some of the restrictions we have on entering into certain contracts and procurement things that we may decide to opt into at some point, if we decide we want to go for reimbursement, let's say, if we, we decide to enter into a contract. It also allows us the ability to venture into other, if you want to do executive orders of any type going forward. Obviously, I would, would defer to our, our county attorney's office for the limitations on those. But it does open up that window of opportunity to be, to be able to do those types of things.
Very good. Any further comments regarding that point?
No, I, I just, no.
Very good. I'm going to recognize Commissioner McKinley, and then we'll go down the line. But before we go to Commissioner McKinley, just a reminder that when the board is able to convene, which we are currently able to convene, the authority to declare a state of emergency and any directives that are related to that rests in the Board of County Commissioners. And so it may be incumbent upon us to make those considerations here today. Commissioner McKinley?
Thank you, Mayor Kerner. If you'll bear with me, this may take a little bit of time. I want to ask some questions first before I make my comments. My first question would go, Ms. Baker, if it's okay, I see the fire chief standing in the back. If we could ask the fire chief a couple of questions? I was on a call last night, and one of our state representatives, who also serves in the fire rescue department, made a comment that drop-off times are becoming a problem in the area emergency rooms because there's no beds in some of our emergency rooms for fire rescue to deliver a patient. One resulted in nearly a two-hour wait in an, with an ambulance outside of an emergency department recently. So those are ambulances that are, are stuck in queue at our hospitals and can't get back out on the street. So I'm curious what your, what your department is seeing overall, Chief Durin?
Well, certainly, in the midst of an event that we all recognize has caused impacts to all aspects of rescue services, we have observed some delays at some facilities. We work very closely with the rest, representatives at those hospitals and their staff to expedite our transfer of patients. So we're certainly challenged, but we're working through it as best we can with all of the affected agencies and hospitals.
Okay. And now, when a patient at Lakeside, for instance, has to be transferred, I know they've recently been given a COPCM, but I understand it's not quite staffed and operational just yet. So last week, I know we were transferring patients down to Miami. Ms. Davis mentioned we're bringing one up to Orange County. How are we transferring those patients out of county?
Well, oftentimes, they work with AMR to provide those necessary transports when required.
Okay. And are we able to transfer them by trauma hook, Ms. Davis?
Weather permitting, yes. When they're, assuming that they're stable and that their lungs will handle the pressure from the flight, then yes.
And if, if you have to transfer somebody from Belgrade to Orlando via trauma hook, what's the turnaround time on that?
Turnaround from the time that we know that they need to go, or the time, I mean, is it, we can be there.
A chopper picks up or leaves the airport, comes out, picks you, their patient up, takes them to Orlando, drops them off to Orlando, and then is back at the airport?
I'm going to speculate, probably a couple hours. You know, I, I don't know for sure, but probably a couple hours.
And how many trauma hooks do we have in the county?
Two.
Two. So that's taking at least one outing, if there's an emergency, what's our backup plan if both of our choppers are out?
Ground.
Ground. And Chief Durin, how is, how's your staffing going at, at stations? Are you having any backup, people out on sick leave, people in quarantine?
We, like much of the community, are seeing an increase of positive firefighters. By this time, we continue to have adequate staffing in order to support the needs of the community.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Dr. Alonso, one thing you haven't reported on this morning is the situation in our schools. And I'm reading updates out of Hillsborough County, for example, today, on the fifth, fourth day of school, I believe, they've got nearly 6,000 students and staff on quarantine right now. What are we seeing in our schools?
You're saying the total number of staff and children in quarantine right now is 6,000 in Palm Beach County?
No, 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 that's Hillsborough County.
Oh, in Hillsborough? I was like, what happened last night? I, I didn't bring for you the total number that we have in quarantine, but I will tell you that we're doing this right now on a daily basis. And our priority is to make sure that any, just because one person in a classroom is positive does not mean that everybody goes home. We're making sure that when we do our contact tracing with the help of the school board, as well as with our staff, that we have dedicated specifically teams for the school, that we can turn around as quickly as possible. If we get notification of a child being out and needing to be quarantined, we immediately start that contact tracing to find out who that child was around, what type of setting it was, do they go from class to class, do they not? So all those decisions come into place, and the idea is to get all the vaccinated kids either not leave, have to leave the school that day, or be able to come back the very next day. So far, we've been able to accomplish that. We're continuing to hire more people because if these numbers continue to go up, which we expect they will, we will need even more contact tracers than what we have now. We have 65 on the pipeline right now to come in. So the idea is, we've been working really, really well with the school district. They have put into place not only the Department of Education protocol, but they've tweaked it a little bit to make it as clear as possible. Many of the parents who have vaccinated children are making available their vaccine cards so that the school has that record on site, so that child would not have to go home. And of course, we also are working very closely with the principals to make sure that they understand all the changes that have occurred, and that they can communicate that well to the parents. You know, people become very anxious when they find out that one child in their classroom is positive. And so we try to talk to those parents. Our EPI line is dedicated to the public who is calling in, as well as to the school board. And we have it set up that each school has a, a specific person to contact for that information. Also, the tremendous help that has been done by the school nurses, we now have an actual school nurse in every school, and their testing that they're doing is very, very valuable so that we can eliminate folks that, you know, are, are not COVID and just have the sniffles and the, you know, that's, that's a daily routine for any teacher in a classroom to have sniffling kids running around. But now it's more important than ever. So we're really concentrating. There's been a lot of rumors. When school started, we already had a whole group of kids that had been positive over the summer and close to school. So that got confused. We did not have 400 people out in one day. That was not true. It was the accumulation of everybody that we were handling at the time. So it, so far, it's working really well. But I, I will tell you that the thought of these number of cases continuing to go up and the spread in the school is something that we're trying to control very, very closely by really dedicating time and effort to making sure that we can do all the screening and all the medical information as quickly as possible.
Okay. Dr. Alonso, I'm looking at the COVID testing sites, and I really appreciate that the Healthcare District is going to get something up and operational this week. But when I, when I see your, your By Zip Code dashboard, and I haven't seen one this week, I saw that By Census Track was presented, but the By Zip Code dashboard, the last one I looked at for the Glades, we had nearly a 26% to 27% positivity rate. And yet, it's the only testing site operation that the health, or the Department of Health is supporting, but its hours are eight to 11. The other ones are nine to four, nine to five, nine to seven. Why such a reduced presence in the Glades region?
It's been, well, the staff is there all day, but we did those hours so that you have to open up vials, and you have to be able to have a group of people to vaccinate.
No, no, this is for testing.
For the testing?
Yeah.
Well, the testing is available all day, but people usually show up first thing in the morning. So that's the hours that we have. If somebody comes in after 12 or so forth, we can go ahead and test them. We haven't turned anybody away. But those are the hours that they're showing up. There's not as much testing going on in the Glades as there is in the other sites. So one of the things that's going to help the testing site at the hospital is to be able to alleviate people that are going to the hospital to get tested. And we'll see what kind of volume that creates. I think as we go forward, and if we need to expand those hours, we certainly can. We've been averaging about 100 to 200 tests in, in that timeframe. So the testing goes very quickly. We can test a lot of people very quickly. It's not like the vaccinations, you have to wait 15 minutes for them to make sure they're okay and so forth. So we're basically adjusting our hours to the volume that we have.
Can you double-check that for me? Because the calls my office was receiving yesterday indicated that they originally went to Lakeside and were turned away for testing and told to go to Braumback. They went to Braumback and got in a line that nearly wrapped around the building, and then they were told once 11 o'clock hit that they were done for the day. So if you could check that for me and make sure that your staff knows to take anybody who shows up for testing, until the Healthcare District has their mobile operation up and running, that would be very helpful.
That would definitely be done probably before I leave here.
And can you tell me, I mean, there's a pretty disturbing article in the And can you tell me, I mean, there's a pretty disturbing article in the Palm Beach Post, came out online a day or two ago, but I think it's in print today. More than half of the Western County jail population is in quarantine right now. Do you have any, any resources going to prevention there at the jail site?
Yes, not only the testing, but also we went ahead and vaccinated. We had a group go out there to vaccinate both at the Eastern Jail as well as the Western facility. The problem with the jail is that because of the way that they have them housed, one person in that housing area, everybody gets quarantined in that area, and it's very difficult to do that. So they do have some, an increase in the number of positive tests, but I think it's the way they're quarantining. I wouldn't argue, I'm sure somebody gave them those numbers, but it, it's not people that are positive. The majority of the people who they've tested are all asymptomatic. And we have vaccinated, on two days, we went and vaccinated because their medical provider was unable to do it, so we went ahead and sent a team, an IMT team, out to the east, the jail here on, by the fairgrounds, as well as their site out in Belgrade.
Okay, and Dr. Alonso, my last question for you is gonna center on our farm workers. We spoke a few months ago about making sure we were all geared up for our farm workers who will be returning within a few weeks. Have you started that outreach with our, with our area farmers? And if not, how can I help you?
We are prepared, and one of the reasons that we're happy to see these contracts that we've made with these vendors is to free up our van to be able to go out and do exactly what you're anticipating, which is going out to the farm growers and vaccinating them on site. That's the best way to get them. It also saves them from traveling in buses and, you know, in other, in other ways that would make them become positive, if there's someone positive. We're also encouraging them to make sure they wear masks when they do the travel, because they do travel in buses back and forth across the county and to other counties. So I think that they all recognize the need, that they wanna keep their employees safe, and so the vaccine will be very important as well as making sure that they protect themselves.
What federal requirements do they have when they're coming in through customs with these H2A visas before they arrive in our community? Are they, are they tested when they come in, or do we need to test them when they arrive here?
I would expect that we would test them here locally. I know they have to be tested for TB and some other issues, but I, I don't know, and I will find that out today, that's a good question, if they're testing for COVID.
Okay.
I know our refugee clinic, we have a very large number of testing that's going on there, and they really appreciate being able to get tested. They wanna know.
Okay, and then Ms. Davis, a question for you. You've been so helpful.
Thank you.
Your team has been amazing, and I bothered you all weekend long, and I know you were trying to get some more.
It was only my birthday, that's all.
We had a very successful kind of grassroots effort last spring at the, the last surge that we experienced, where we were doing door to door, try to not get out the vote, but I guess get out the vaccine.
Yeah.
Is that something that we can revive?
I think, I mean, we could certainly participate. I don't know that we have the resources because we're back in, you know, we're, we're in pretty high intensity mode with patients in the hospital. We're subbing and bringing in employees from our other areas throughout the district, but we could certainly set up a vehicle and help participate. If we could get some community support to do some of that, we could then, you know, whether it's follow behind or sit in a place, or, you know, we could certainly participate. I just don't know that we have the resources to get out into the community and start knocking on doors, because most of our employees are providers. They are nurses, they are CNAs, they are doctors, and they need to be there to help respond to this, but I'm open to your ideas.
Do you have a volunteer coordinator in the healthcare district?
We do not. We can work with someone else who has, you know, volunteers. We, it depends on the types of volunteers. Most of what we do is healthcare, so having volunteers in our environment is very limited. It, it's actually a little cumbersome legally because of our healthcare nature, but-
Okay, I think you have a board member who was appointed by the county to serve on your board, Ms. Jackson Moore, who would-
Yes.
-probably love to be engaged in this conversation to see how we can try to make that happen.
Absolutely, I'll bring her in, I think she's meeting with some of our team today. We'll add this to the conversation.
Okay, and I know that Christ Fellowship has been wonderful in outreach. They might be a willing partner as well.
Absolutely. I'll follow up.
Governor, Mayor Kerner, thank you for allowing me some latitude in asking those questions first. You know, it dawned on me that, you know, the governor's office issued a statement yesterday that the governor doesn't declare a state of emergency if there are resources available that exist to address the needs in the community. And I think it became very clear over the weekend that those resources did not exist within our community. And thank, I am very grateful for the media coverage on this issue that has resulted in miraculous finding of, of beds. But the fact that the healthcare district was nearly in a position to start calling out of state hospitals to serve Palm Beach County residents is disturbing and shows we do not have the resources available right now in our community to address the needs in certain parts of our community. And, you know, the, the data and the information I gave you is not something I pulled out of thin air. I know the situation at Palms West with the, with the supplies that they were having and the transferring in and out of patients and the waitlist at the emergency department, i- is not something I made up. I serve on the Board of Trustees there, and so, I mean, that, that information was all confirmed before I provided it to you. I live behind Wellington Regional, and I talked to their CEO, and I know that their ICU was full over the weekend. Darcy called 13 hospitals in our county. Last week, we were sending Glades patients down to Miami this week. You know, it, it's up to Orange County and possibly out of state. We still have patients that need a bed, and we haven't been able to find a bed for them. We are converting very, very limited bed space at the only hospital in that region to serve COVID patients, which means if there are constituents in that area who need those services from those beds that we've just had to convert, now we have a domino effect and we don't have a place to put those patients. We do not have the resources, at least in the western part of our community right now, to address the demand that we have. And for that reason, I am asking this board, and I am making a motion that we declare a local state of emergency.
Second. Motion is made by Commissioner McKinley, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Pursuant to Section 9 dash 35 of our comprehensive emergency management plan and ordinances that empower the Board of County Commissioners to declare a local state of emergency. We'll continue the discussion. Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
And Mr. Mayor, I also support requesting the hospital data that you're seeking.
Very good, and that will be attached as an initial directive under the order, should it pass by the Board of County Commissioners by majority vote. And if it's all right with the commissioner, we'll continue with questions related to the motion and the broader issue of COVID-19. We'll go now to Commissioner Bernard, then to Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just have several questions. Todd, just, I saw that on page five of Dr. Alonso's slide. It included the vaccination and testing sites, one at the Civic Center and then one at the Gardeners Library and at the VA. Kind of like, what are we doing in regards to other areas in the county in regards to other testing and vaccination sites?
Commissioner Bernard, thank you for that question. We have been working with the contractors that the state initially brought into our county to set up that first state site at the Mid-County Senior Center. Those, of course, have expanded to those two sites that were indicated there. We've also identified some additional sites in the county, in the southern part of the county, and also in the central eastern portion of Palm Beach County, that we have been working with those contractors as well to set up. And my expectation is that those will be forthcoming, probably within the same duration as the site that was indicated in Belgrade.
Thank you very much. Dr. Alonso, you mentioned briefly the monoclonal antibody. Can you kind of like give us a little bit more information about it to the public? And, and also, Todd, what are we doing in regards to monoclonal antibodies for our residents in the county?
It's a very important therapy that has been available quite some time. It basically takes a person who is positive, and they can get this therapy before they become ill, before they start having problems. Once you're ill and you're in the hospital, you know, then that's a different story. But the idea is that if a person tests positive, they will be able to call and get this set up right away through a mobile site that would kind of be like a, a drive-through situation where they could go in, get the infusion or the, under the skin, depending, there's, there's two ways of administering it. And they would be able to do that quickly and effectively without any barriers. Some of the barriers are, one, few locations that we do have them available now. The hospitals right now are treating patients in the ER, which is not good use of the emergency department, however, they're doing it because there's nowhere else for the patient to go to. So in our conversations with the hospitals, that was something that they really asked for, that we would set that up here in the county. So that is gonna come from the state. The Surgeon General will actually have a standing order where the person doesn't have to even go out and get the prescription, so there'll be no barriers to getting that therapy. And it just helps you recuperate faster. So it's actually a treatment for COVID. That's how we'd like to look at it. And so making it available is one thing, but the other thing that needs to be done is the doctors in the community are aware of how to utilize it and how to recommend it to their patients if they have somebody that is positive. So that will be kicking off. The medical societies are gonna help us to get that out to the physicians, the information as well as how to utilize it properly so they can be more aware of its use and how to treat the patients that are positive.
Dr. Alonso, so would the, like, the hospitals, would they transfer, would they send those positive patients to that potential site, or?
Yes, instead of having to do it in their ER, because they have no place else to do it. That, that's tying up a bed, even if it's an hour or two hours, that's a bed that is being tied up.
Thank you. Now, I read somewhere in the state that, I believe that there was one that was open in the state. Are we, what's the timeframe, Todd, in regards to potentially having a site in the county?
Commissioner Bernard, that's correct. Last week, I know the governor was in Duval County announcing the opening of one of the first state monoclonal sites. There is an effort underway by the state to have 10, perhaps more, of those sites located throughout the state. We were contacted and have been working throughout the weekend and yesterday and have identified a central location for one of those sites here in Palm Beach County, and it's our expectation that that will be open before the end of this week potentially, very soon, and we hope to have some additional announcements for you about that in the next day or so.
Thank you very much.
One other thing I would also add, sir, is that our staff has also been working through a contract that we have with AMR, and AMR can provide some of the monoclonal treatment in a resident's home. And so there are stipulations, and they are in the process of working to set up that appointment system to be able to deliver that to those individuals' homes. So there will be a couple of options in Palm Beach County very soon.
Thank you very much. Now, Mary, I saw that when you're doing your updates, that, you know, some of the datas are not avail- are not available. As part of this emergency order, would we be able to get some, create some of these datas or create a dashboard that's available for the public to be able to see in terms of real-time information?
I believe that's the ultimate outcome that we're gonna wanna see. We've really had minimal official visibility on some of those indicators we used to collect before, like ICU beds and hospital rates. So if we look at collecting those indicators again, we'll, we'll make sure, make every effort to have that information available as timely as possible based on what's actually put in that directive.
Thank you very much. So would we, do we need to give directives to get those data, or is it just a, I know that we had mentioned that to have the real-time COVID bed availability, are there other information that we need in this motion, or are we okay?
Commissioner, if the motion that's on the floor passes the board in that direction comes to us, we believe that we have sufficient information in terms of indicators that we need to request of the hospitals. We've reached out to Department of Health and Healthcare District and are consulting with them about, you know, possible pertinent information that we should include in that. So we have in the neighborhood of 18 to 25 or so data indicators that we think might be important to help make future decisions.
Okay, thank you very much. And, Dr. Alonso, I was reading this morning that I believe that the administration is looking at requiring or asking people to do the booster shots eight months after they receive their second shot. Are we making plans right now in regards to gearing up to get some of our residents to be ready to take those booster shots?
That's an interesting question to answer, because I still only have a minority of people that are vaccinated, so I think that the people who have been vaccinated would probably be happy to get a booster, some of them. But that's gonna be tricky, because we still haven't vaccinated those who are unvaccinated. So I think our efforts have to go to get those people vaccinated first. Or, in other words, I would think my, my main priority would be to get unvaccinated people vaccinated. Those who want boosters are gonna be able to do it. I'm sure they're gonna make it really easy where you don't even have to have a doctor's opinion on it. I think that right now, the, the mandate, not the mandate, but the recommendation from many of the medical opinion is that for people who are immunosuppressed because their body does not make enough antibodies, that consideration of giving the booster makes sense. But at this point, we haven't seen that the vaccine doesn't work, so I think that will be, to be determined, and I think they have to talk about that to make that recommendation, just like they did the one that was done by the FDA as well as the academy that looks at immunizations and the CDC. If they make that decision, then I'm sure that the people that are eager to get vaccinated will go ahead and get those boosters, in which case, yes, all these locations would multiply very quickly. Hopefully, they will do it so that we can time it and not have everybody rush to the door at the same time. That was the difficulty we had when we said 65 and over, so all of a sudden you have 250,000 people rushing to get a vaccine. So if that can be done with a little thought ahead of time, that would be very helpful.
Okay, yeah, it's just, I just think that we just need to kind of like plan it out a little bit, because, you know, sometimes in September, this is gonna be a decision that we'll have to make. I saw that in regards to kids who are under 12, since I have an under 12-year-old, so, you know, it seems like the FDA's taken a little bit longer time to review the data in regards to getting those kids vaccinated. Any timeframe have you looked at in terms of, or any discussions in regards to, what's the timeframe to get kids under 12 vaccinated?
The last time they said it would be sometime in, you know, September, October, maybe, you know, before Christmas kind of situation, but I have not kept up with that. I'm sorry, I've been trying to get kids back to school.
And I, and you mentioned getting kids back to school. Commissioner McKinley, you had mentioned regards to the, the school system, having kids in the school system. It's like, as a parent, you basically are gonna get emails every day that there is COVID in the classroom or in the school, so that's kind of like the emails that I get on a daily basis. So as a parent, that's kind of like what I face. And, you know, to the parents who have not got, if your kids are over 12, they haven't been vaccinated, please get them vaccinated, because that's what we're get- I know for me, my, my, my 13, and, well, she's not 13, but she acts 30. But they've been vaccinated, but we're getting emails basically on a daily basis that, you know, someone in the, in the classroom has been tested for COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. And I think it's a fascinating and encouraging data point that it, based upon your update, Dr. Alonso, I noticed that the, that segment of the population, 12 to 19, actually exceeded the 20 to 29 in vac, in the rate of vaccination. And it perhaps is one of the reasons our, our school system is faring as well as it has thus far in light of other districts. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. We'll go now to Commissioner Sacks and then to Commissioner Weiss.
Thanks so much, Mr. Mayor. And I'm really angry. I'm glad Commissioner Bernard went before me, so I'm a little bit calmer now. But when I read from Commissioner McKinley, today I was notified that patients in Belle Glade at Lakeside Hospital, in need of critical care due to COVID complications, have no options for care within our county borders. This makes me angry. Why is it that there isn't one hospital in this county that will take an emergency? This is wrong. Whether this will be taken care of by declaring a county emergency, I'm not quite sure. But what we do have in our hands is a crisis, a crisis that, that needs to be fixed. Maybe this is a good wake-up call, Dr. Alonso, that with this COVID, but what's going to happen if there is a, another pandemic that whether it's in Lakeside or whether it's in Boca Raton or Lantana, that there isn't a hospital in this county that will take an emergency? I was so angry when I received that, Commissioner McKinley. I did a little research and I found out that in Broward County, there are 252 ICU beds. In Dade County, there's 251. We have six in this county.
At Lakeside.
For, at Lake, for a public hospital. And then if somebody is sick in critical condition, we don't have a hospital that will take them.
They're full.
Is that true?
Yes.
They're full.
That's wrong, oh, that's wrong. And we need to take care of that. The issue here today is not that we need a curfew, which comes across in, in emergency orders, a pursuant to 252 of the statutes. It's not that we need a curfew or that we need to close businesses. We need to take care of our public health in this county. 13 private hospitals, is that how many we have, Todd? Excuse me for, right?
Yes.
Yeah, 13 private hospitals, and we don't have, we don't have one bed available for somebody in critical care.
With COVID.
This is wrong. And, Mr. Mayor, I don't know, but I think that, I don't know what the procedure would be, but I think we need to recognize this. This is something that is probably a wake-up call for today and because of COVID. But what if we, there will be emergencies in the future. And I just don't know what we can do to make sure that we are, we are better prepared than we are today. Because never should it be said that there is someone in critical care in this community in our beautiful, wealthy county, and they cannot get an ICU bed anywhere. So I am, I, I'm angry and, and I apologize to you, Commissioner McKinley, and, and to your people, to anybody you represent or anybody, any of us represent. There should always be an available bed for someone in this county. And so with that, I just hope that whatever we do coming forward on this issue of, of emergency, declaring a state of emergency, I think, and I've been reading the statute on, on 252 and what it means to declare an emergency. It's almost like if, if, if you have one bird that's upsetting your, your farm and you go out with a shotgun and you kill them all, you know, let's focus on what our, our issue is here. It may be uncomfortable to say, but, but it's glaring us in the face. We don't need to have an entire state of, of emergency with curfews and possibly closing businesses, which could happen under this state of emergency. What we need to do is to make sure we have a public hospital or that we, maybe we need to have temporary placement for folks in the area, for example, let's take, for example, Lakeside. Six ICU beds, say we have 20 patients. Maybe we need to construct something out there temporarily to take care of the people who are ill. Because I just don't think that it is, that, that, that this is the way we should conduct business in this county with our hospitals with folks not being able to get an available bed. That's wrong. And, and to take care of it like today and tomorrow, maybe we should move towards putting emergency placement out there in temporary quarters for those who are sick. Because even if we do an emergency order, how are we going to, and this is sort of out there, this question, I don't know who I should direct it to, but, but under the, under the Florida statute for emergency, declaring a state of emergency, how are we going to proceed to take care of the folks who are sick today, are going to get sicker tomorrow, we're going to have more people sick next week? I'd rather see us move towards temporary placement of, of a hospital beds, temporary hospital beds in the area that is most affected today. And sorry if I, I, no, this makes me angry because these are, these are the people in Palm Beach County that look to us for adequate and available and proper medical attention. And we didn't plan this COVID, but it's here. We deal with it and we deal with it with the best way possible. So that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. I'm going to recognize the administrator, then I'll have some follow-up comments to your comments.
Just wanted to add a caveat that it's just not the beds, it is also personnel. Because when you bring the COVID patient in, that's more one-on-one, and so the hospitals are balancing that as well. They're short on staff, their, their existing staff are working long, very long hours. We are working with the, the hospitals along with Darcy and Mrs. Davis and Dr. Alonso. We're working to try to figure out how do we best do this? It's my understanding that because we're declaring a, a state of emergency, this may, may allow us to go outside and try to contract with others to bring in medical personnel. It may also require that the state somehow does some things as well in order to allow us to bring in personnel from, from certain other states. And so if that is incorrect, please correct me, Darcy, but that's my understanding of...
I'm, I'm not familiar with the procedure, but yes, staff is needed and we need, you know, right now, without a state of emergency, there are limited number of states that have reciprocity with nursing licenses for people that practice in Florida. So I, it's my understanding, again, I'm not the expert on this, but that that emergency order would allow that to open up, to bring in individuals from other states that are licensed as well.
So we were, we had begun working and doing our due diligence on this issue because it, it is something that could potentially help us. We will continue to talk to the hospitals, work with them as well. But it is not just beds, it is also personnel involved in it.
Very good. And Commissioner Sacks, just to follow up on your comments, there's certainly no reason to apologize for the anger that, that you feel and the frustration that Commissioner McKinley and the collective board feels. And it starts to beg the question about the veracity of the information that the private healthcare system communicates to this Board of County Commissioners and this unit of government. It's my understanding that Broward and Miami-Dade Counties have a much larger public health footprint in terms of a public hospital system versus a healthcare district, which is infrastructure, which is beds, which is public employees working to, to make better the lives and health of our constituents. So you got to question why, how they make their decisions on who the private healthcare system accepts into their hospitals, particularly during times of resurgence and in a pandemic. And I think that issue's coming to bear before this board today because of Commissioner McKinley's good work behind the scenes to vet this issue. It is certainly unacceptable that in Western communities, they're, they weren't able to find a bed. And if I understand correctly, our normal public hospital footprint in the ICU, six beds, which was expanded to 12.
Correct.
Whereas inland Palm Beach County, I'm sure there's hundreds of beds, both in the ER and the ICU. And yet there, even with that availability, I can't imagine that every hospital and every ICU and every ER was filled up, but yet there was a representation to you and to a county commissioner that somebody that was in dire need of private health assistance and care wasn't able to get it. So you have every right to be angry, and I think this board shares that anger and concern. We intend to utilize every power of the county to assist our constituents here today. Commissioner Weiss and then to Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a, a few questions and then I have some comments as well. On the, on the issue of monoclonal antibodies, Dr. Alonso, those are being offered under emergency use authorization?
Yes.
So people who are not willing to get vaccinated because they don't have FDA approval are willing to take the monoclonal antibodies that are also not under full FDA authorization?
I actually have seen that happen, yes.
That's, that logically doesn't make sense, but I understand where somebody would want to do whatever they could to save their life, but it seems like the smarter thing to have done would be to have gotten vaccinated in the first place to try and save your life.
I would agree with you.
I, you know, in, in looking at the data and, and, and seeing that, so we're at 13, about 1,300 new cases a day here in Palm Beach County is what we're averaging over a seven-day period of time. I have to go to the New York Times to, to see this or go to the CDC's website to, to see the data that's being reported out of Florida. And of course, Palm Beach County only reports once a week, so we only get a, a weekly update on what's happening, so we have to try and extrapolate what's going on statewide. But the 14-day average in Palm Beach County positivity, based on the CDC data, is now up to 21%. So I think it's important for the public to be aware of that. How long is it taking for the, now, you mentioned something of a delay in the time for the test results to be received back. How long is that taking?
We were getting results back within 24 hours sometimes, definitely one to two days. Almost every pharmacy that you call, if you ask them, how long's the turnaround time, they will tell you five to seven days.
So five to seven days. So somebody comes down, they think they may have it, they may have been exposed, and so it's five to seven days for them to get the results back to know whether or not they in fact have or tested positive. So what happens those, it seems like we're back to where we were back, you know, back months ago, where people now, they should be staying home, right? They, they, they should, and once they go to get tested, if they don't, they have to, they should be staying home until they get their results. Is that correct?
That is the quarantine order, yes. And so that has an entire ripple effect across the entire community, retail, schools, healthcare, everything, because those people are going to be out of work a lot longer. Those who refuse to get tested then have to maintain the full quarantine of the 10 days. So there are rapid tests that people can do at home, but those don't have any, there are, there are two types of rapid tests that are being sold. One is a rapid test that gets sent to a lab to process, and the other is a rapid test that you can actually do at home yourself. The problem with the rapid test at home is that it has no validity in terms of who it is and, and, and the test results. So it's difficult to take that test as proof of positivity or negativity. I don't know if we're going to do anything in terms of allowing that to be proof of a negative test. The other issue is that, again, what is causing this is the large number of people who are not vaccinated and are being told by their employer that they, their option is to either get vaccinated or get tested, sometimes as often as two times a week and other times, you know, once a week. So that is putting a huge volume of people going for testing that hopefully will all be negative, but that's, like I said, that's not the way to do prevention. That, that doesn't make any sense, even for that employer, because again, they could be positive the very next day.
So you have epidemiologists on your staff, correct?
I'm sorry?
Epidemiologists on your staff?
Yes.
And so they're looking, they're looking at, at our, our local data. Do they see it every day?
Yes, we report our information every day.
And so that data, so they've had an opportunity to look at it, clean it up, make sure that it, it's accurate before they report that back up through the state?
That's correct.
Because I, one of the things I had read was the concern the governor had was the extra work, but it sounds like you guys are already doing the work to get the data to the state to make it available.
I have no idea what the governor was talking. I don't know what he said about that, but we're working every day.
So you don't have to hire extra epidemiologists to get the data? You do it every day?
We do it every day.
I, that's what I assume. My mom was an epidemiologist, I know what she used to do, so. So I guess the, the other questions I had really are really about, well, two things. One is on the emergency order. Would that allow us to, allow doctors to then provide telemedicine? Because one of the expirations of the previous emergency order was the cancellation of telemedicine. So if somebody just needs a prescription refilled, they don't have to go to the doctor's office, they can see them online and, and make the determination that they can refill their prescription.
Yeah, no, we, our emergency order would not have that authority. That would have to be a state-issued order.
And what about for, I know we have folks that have retired, medical personnel, nurses and doctors, for them to be able to participate. So that would also require state?
That would also be state.
So, so there's a real need then for some, for the state to take some action, both for offering telemedicine and, and some allowing retirees? And then I know it was mentioned earlier about people coming in from out of state to be able to, to work in our community.
Yeah, we could, we can contract with people who are qualified in our state, but we can't waive any requirements or take any action that would be, that would require a state statute be changed or, or amended on a temporary basis.
So we couldn't, we could not try and get folks then from out of state to, to help support our hospitals?
Not unless they're duly licensed or we have reciprocity.
All right, that's, that's concerning. All right, so I think the other things I, I, you know, I, I think the, I also view on HHS website, I see their hospital availability, but it's inaccurate. I mean, I see, I see one chain in particular, I'm not going to call their name out because I don't know whether it's their issue or if it's HHS's issue, but every day, their hospitals show 100% at capacity, which I know is not, not true. Do we have any idea how this information gets transmitted and why it's, it's, it's not accurate?
The HHS data?
Yeah, the hospital, when they show the hospital bed availability?
Should be coming from some of their billing data, so you can bill for COVID patients. So a lot of the HHS data comes from financial transactions. I don't know the specific instance you're talking about, but I think the HHS data is, has been more accurate than the Florida Hospital Association because those, Florida Hospital Association is taking voluntary survey responses, whereas HHS is looking at claims data. It's my own.
Well, yes, yesterday Broward has on, they have a dashboard of now, real-time dashboard of their bed availability, including pediatric ICU. Yesterday, there were zero pediatric ICU beds available in Broward County.
It does, I mean, that doesn't surprise me.
I have no idea what's available in Palm Beach County, but I think the public deserves and has a right to know what, what's really happening on the ground.
Commissioner, there, I did want to point out that I know the federal government, FEMA, does have a strike team that involves nurses and professionals that are going out to various jurisdictions. So once we declare a state of emergency, we would follow normal emergency management processes, which does involve getting the state involved and the federal government, and we could request that assistance. But we do need some data in order to validate because we suspect there might be some questions. If our hospitals are saying they have the ability to take care of patients, that we need data to show the state and the federal government that we do in fact need the extra assistance. There's dual messages right now.
Right, understood, understood. So I guess, I mean, this is, I, I've never, I'm never in my lifetime, I've seen anything, you know, like this. I don't think any, any of us are old enough to remember a previous pandemic like this. But the things that I, I know are clear is... But the things that I know are clear is things are changing all the time and that we think that we have it under control, but we don't control the virus. The virus is in control of whatever is happening. Dr. Alonso, as to what relates to people that have been vaccinated, are there, I know we've now determined that there are breakthrough cases and that there is now the belief that they also can transmit the virus to somebody else, including the unvaccinated. So as vaccinated people, should we be doing things differently with our own behaviors based on what's happening on the ground right now?
I am agreeing with the CDC guidelines that say that we should be wearing our masks at all times, because the virus is around us and those people, even vaccinated, people could transmit it. So I think it's more important than ever for those of us who are willing to wear our masks to do so, not only to protect ourselves, because there is breakthrough, and it's gone up a little bit from what we had before, but not all breakthrough cases are reported. So even in trying to get the information, we're having difficulty because it's not always reported. So for that reason, and also the fact that the community spread is so widespread, that I think everybody should be wearing their mask as much as possible, even when you're indoors, and just try to protect yourself so that you can protect your family and your community.
Have you looked at the CDC projections for the state of Florida in regards to the future?
Well, predictions are predictions, but they've been pretty accurate. So yes, I have looked at them, and it doesn't look pretty.
From my understanding, when I looked at them yesterday, it's not showing us hitting our peak for another four weeks?
I suspect at the rate we're going, it might even be worse, not only because of how efficient the virus is at transmitting itself, but also because this is happening so fast. It's happening everywhere at the same time. Think about trying to get staff, for example, or a medical field hospital that comes, like, ready to build. We're in the middle of hurricane season, so there's a lot of things working against us. We're also coming up to flu season, and we're going to have flu season on top of the pandemic, which happened in 2009. We had the flu season and then the H1N1 all at the same time. We had a big spike. We have the spike now. Our number of cases per week are much more than we were at the highest peak. That's why I made that graph, so everybody could see that. And the fact that it's happening all over the state, all over the country, is difficult to get resources from other places. We have run, we have run out of things like oxygen, not because we don't have oxygen, but because we don't have drivers to deliver the oxygen. So this is affecting, it's a cascade effect that affects businesses, schools, healthcare, everybody, because of so many people being out sick.
And then Mary, Ms. Blakeney, I'm really concerned about, we're in the peak, coming into the peak of hurricane season now. We've had two storms come by us, or one in the process of coming by us in the next few days. What would, what's, what's the plan if we get hit with a hurricane and the hospitals are at capacity now? What's the plan for, for that?
Well, we've, we've continued to have our COVID restrictions in place as far as an activation, not only in our EOC, but all of our staffing of our shelter operations. We've been having those discussions with our Department of Health as well as our emergency management stakeholders. We will implement screenings at all of our shelters. Individuals will be required to wear masks. We have plenty of the PPE available, should people come and not have hand sanitizer, not have masking. Our school district partners will continue to do the enhanced cleaning protocols in all of our facilities, and we're going to initiate the social distancing. But one of those messages that went out, and thank you, Mayor Kerner, at the last press conference when we had a storm out there, was, you know, we need our residents to look at those preparedness measures now, and if they do not need to seek shelter at a congregate type of shelter environment, we encourage them to stay with family and friends and not go into that environment if they don't, if they don't have to. We want them to stay home, so they need to be doing those mitigation measures now personally.
But I guess my question is, is more directed at our hospital capacity. So if we're, if we're maxed out now and all of a sudden we need another 500 beds in the county because a storm hits us, what's, what's Plan B?
You, you will have to triage and make very difficult decisions that other hospitals in other states have made during this pandemic.
So.
So you can't guarantee you're going to have beds to put in a person that comes in with an emergency. They may not be able to be treated. Those are very hard decisions to make, but that's the kind of crisis we are in, not only here in Palm Beach County. We're talking across the whole state and the nation. So it's very serious. That's why we put the charts and the numbers that we put, but the, the public needs to be aware of this, and that's why I believe that implementing our local emergency order is important to get people to realize this. I still have people that come up to me and saying, "Why are you wearing a mask? COVID is gone." So not everybody listens to the news or listens to the Board of County Commission meetings, obviously.
Yeah. I mean, it's clear, we need to, we need to have our data, getting, getting our daily numbers. They need to come back. I've, I've been asking for this for a while. It's, because the public is, is, I think, is very disengaged to a great extent on just how serious and severe our situation is here, not only in Palm Beach County, the state of Florida, but the United States with this surge that we're seeing and our ability to respond. There may come a time when we can't respond because we have no capacity. And to my colleague's point, you know, even though we can, we can put more beds in the hospital rooms, we don't have the staff to assist the people. So, I mean, people that are sick with other things are going to be impacted by this as well. They're not going to be able to get their treatments. I know, I've heard people are being turned away at some of our private hospitals now, that they are scheduled treatment, we can't take you, you're going to have to wait. But I, the only way to stop this is really through vaccinations.
That's our only tool we have right now. So anybody listening, if you're on the fence still, let me push you off the fence and go get vaccinated today.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. We'll go now to Commissioner Moreno and then to Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, and I think most of the commission has asked all the questions I had to ask, but I do have one. Our numbers are going up, obviously. I have had the not-so-good opportunity to be at the emergency room several times over the last couple of weeks, and what I saw going into the emergency room were kids. So of our increasing numbers, and correct me if I'm wrong, children under the age of 12 cannot get vaccinated. The numbers that we're showing for positive cases, how many of those cases are children under the age of 12? Because if they can't get vaccinated, that's another issue. So do we have a statistic that says X amount of the new cases are children under the age of 12?
You're talking about in the hospitals or just in general?
Just in general.
The numbers have gone up. I don't have the recent numbers, but I can get that and give you that information. I can send it to all of you, so you have it.
I mean, I know we're encouraging people to get vaccinated, but it's, if the, the number of cases that are, are rising are in children under the age of 12, a vaccine doesn't do any good for them, so.
I have the state report here. Ask another question. Let me look and see if I can see how many cases we have here.
Okay. So I will ask another question, and this one's going to be even less popular. Under state of emergency, does that give our airport the authority to ask for proof of vaccination upon entry? And if not proof of vaccination, then proof of a negative COVID test? I know that when I traveled to New York over the holidays in December, I had to show proof of a negative COVID test.
I don't know the answer to that question. I'm hesitant. I think it might not, but I would need to have some airport people look into that for me.
Like I said, another unpopular question.
Yeah, maybe federal authorities involved in that.
Okay, thank you.
I have it right here in the report that goes out every week. The cumulative number of children under the age of 12 that are cases is 240,716. That's for the state, and it's at 14.8%. And from the previous week, children under the age of 12, new positivity, new case positivity was 21.1%. Number of cases in the previous week for children under 12 was 16,754 for the state. Now, that does not get broken down by county. We only have the part for the, for the state numbers. In terms of age groups for deaths, it's very low for the under 16. There have been 10 deaths, 16 to 29, 179 deaths, and they go up with the highest number being in the 50 to 59 with 3,097 deaths. So the highest number obviously continues to be people over the age of 65. So.
Well, my concern is just that we're talking about the rise in cases and we're talking about vaccines, but if the rise in cases, the largest rise in cases is in children under the age of 12, a vaccine doesn't do any good because they can't get vaccinated. So all I'm asking is that when we're looking at statistics, we look at them accurately because we don't want to, God, I'm going to say this word out loud, we don't want to panic people. Now, yes, we want people to get vaccinated, and yes, we have people that aren't, and I don't believe that we should bribe people into getting vaccinated. I think that's wrong. But I do believe that we need to know specifically that, you know, if, if we're at a 21% positivity rate and 14% of that is children under 12, then we're really at a 6% positivity rate of people that can be vaccinated. Did I do the math correctly?
I lost you on.
Yeah, I did. I did the math correctly.
No, it's, well, it's not a one-for-one. I mean, the population group of those being tested that are under 12 could be far less, which would skew the analytical data in terms of, what's that? He says you have to change the denominator, but each, each population group is not the exact same amount, so you can't just, from my position, and I'm not a statistician.
No, but we're bulking everybody into one statistic.
Well, and I, and that's why I said you had to be very careful when you look at the overinflated, you know, how many people have we vaccinated? Because we still have a long way to go in the under 59 age, right?
But under 12 is not vaccinated, and if under 12 is making up a good, a larger portion of the new cases, we have to make sure that that is reflected.
Yes, we agree on that.
Is it making up a larger segment of the new cases?
I do not believe it makes a larger percentage than the rest of the ages, but we are seeing children in the ICU now that we did not see before, larger numbers of children and young adults coming into the hospitals, and that can be verified by the hospitals themselves.
Are they better protected when the adult population gets vaccinated from transmission?
Well, that, that would make sense, yes, but also the fact that we can treat them and hopefully they will not die. So my concern there, it's good that they don't die because.
Well, we don't want anybody dying.
The fact that we don't want anybody dying, but then the younger you are, the more chances you have of having long-term and more severe long-term consequences. So it's not just the mortality, it's the morbidity that goes along with the COVID. You know, if you're 79 years old and it affects your liver, chances are it's not going to bother you too much. But if you're a young child and it affects your liver, that's going to be consequences you're going to have to deal with that's going to reduce your life expectancy. So it's, it's not black and white, and it is significant, but I agree, we don't want to alarm people. The death rate has not increased, you know, to huge numbers.
No, I just wanted, I want the adults in the room to realize that, yes, you should go get vaccinated because the children in the room can't.
That's a beautiful way to put it.
I'm done, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Moreno. We'll go to Commissioner Bernard and then to Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Baker, just, I know we talked about, we're talking about vaccinations. Have we started thinking about, I, because one of the question that Commissioner Weiss had mentioned was in regards to hurricane season, and with hurricane season, all of our county employees are basically essential workers. Have we thought about the county taking the lead in terms of our vaccination requirements for our county employees? And what are we looking at? Because I think that we have to take the lead in the county in terms, we're asking people to be vaccinated, and what are we doing in regards to our county employees getting vaccinated?
We have moved forward with our county employees getting vaccinated. We're roughly about 50%. We have provided incentives through our wellness program. I have encouraged and directed, my department has, to allow staff time to go get vaccinated so that they don't necessarily have to use their sick time to go get vaccinated. We are looking at other future options. I've had a discussion with Nan, with Ms. Bolton, along with HR, RISK, and the county attorney's office on what our options are, what the ramifications are. I've begun some discussions with one of our larger unions as well, because I think we're coming to that point. We've also been putting out information, talking to staff, trying to find out what their hesitations are on taking the vaccine. And for a lot of our personnel that are of childbearing age, their concern has been fertility. So we actually held a town hall meeting just for my, for our staff. We did invite other constitutional officers to have their people on, and we had the appropriate doctors on that particular call to answer those type of questions. We're also, we also put out in my last newsletter to staff, information further addressing those type issues. So what I have intentionally done was methodically given people appropriate information, incentives to get the vaccination, and our next step may very well be to require all county employees to be vaccinated by a certain period of time. But I want to make sure that if we're going to take that step, that it, it is across the board. We don't necessarily require certain segments of the staffing to get vaccinated and then not require the others. One of my major factors in this is that the end of this month, it's my understanding that FDA is going to fully approve the vaccinations, the vaccines. When that happens, because that's the other part, and what I've been hearing from staff is that this is still experimental, I don't want to take it until it's fully approved. So that will also assist us going out into the future.
Ms. Baker, in regards to, should this be a decision that's made by you as the administrator? Or should we get a board directive or decision in regards to making that requirement in regards to vaccination?
I believe as your county administrator, serving CEO, that the operational portion of that decision is mine. However, I do encourage the board to give me your input, what you're thinking, because at the end of the day, your phones are going to be ringing off the hooks and you're going to be getting the emails. So what we want to do is make sure that enough of our staff has been vaccinated, keeping in mind there are people, staff, that will not be able to take the vaccine. So we have to have that out, and for medical and religious reasons. So we will always take that into consideration. But for those of us that are able to take it, to protect not only ourselves, our family, our coworkers, and the community at large, I'm strongly encouraging staff to, to ask any questions, get with me, let me know what their hesitations are, so we can get them to voluntarily go ahead and get vaccinated. to voluntarily go ahead and get vaccinated. I don't want to have to make this a mandate, but as you stated, we are essential personnel and we need to make sure that we have appropriate personnel to handle any emergency and to continue to provide the services that our residents deserve.
From my perspective, I know that I support us doing a mandatory vaccination for all of our county employees, and that includes not union and non-union employees. And, you know, if we do have the FDA authorization, that would be great. And as long as it's subject to medical and religious exemptions, then I would support that 100%. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. We'll go back to Commissioner McKinley and then to Commissioner Weiss.
I just wanted to make some closing comments on the motion that's pending before us today. And, you know, it's not often that social media can be used in a good way. In this instance, it was. And I really want to thank, I'm going to call them out by name, WPTV Channel 5, WPBF Channel 25, WLRN, Telemundo, Jane Musgrave at the Palm Beach Post, and CBS 12, in particular, Jay O'Brien, who retweeted my tweet late Sunday night, which led to a flurry of response on Monday. The media worked well with us and helped us get the message out, and I really appreciate that. There was a tragic story that Chris Kraft, who's a former county commissioner in St. Lucie County and their current tax collector, his wife is a nurse on the Treasure Coast, he posted on Facebook this weekend a story about a local patient, it was a young woman in ICU with COVID on a ventilator, unconscious, pregnant. They had to deliver the baby by emergency C-section at 22 weeks. The baby did not survive, the mother is not expected to survive. We spent a lot of time over the last year protecting our seniors and everybody masked up to protect grandma and grandpa or mom and dad, depending on your age. I don't understand what the hesitancy is about protecting the other most vulnerable segment of our population, and that's our children. And would just ask that this community respond in the same enthusiastic manner for most of the community on protecting our elderly. And they do the same thing to protect our children. Our children don't have a choice. You know, our elderly patients, they had a choice of whether or not they wanted to get a mask or go out in public or get vaccinated when the time came. But these kids under the age of 12, which is half of the public school age, you know, kindergarten through fifth grade, you know, sixth grade, by the time you're in sixth grade, you're turning 12. By the time you're in seventh grade, generally you are 12. Those older kids have an option. But our entire elementary school and preschool, infant, daycare, that entire population has no choice. And we need to do everything we can as a community to protect the littlest among us in the same manner that we protected the older, vulnerable residents among us. And so I am encouraged by the positive comments and the supportive comments I've heard today on the motion that's on the floor and just ask that you all vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley, and then we'll go to Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you. I just, I want to echo my support for Commissioner Bernard's comments regarding our workforce. Also would like, and I wrote, I did write to you and let you know that I think the other steps we can take are, you know, for the folks that have gone ahead and got vaccinated, that they, you know, if they have a breakthrough case or an exposure, that we support them by not, you know, by allowing them whatever time off that they need due to COVID, that that not be charged against their sick time. If somebody makes a different decision, then I think it's on them and they can use their sick time if they decide they're not getting vaccinated. I think it's a reasonable thing to request, if people are not able to be vaccinated, to ask them to be tested so that we know that the rest of workforce, because I am in the same, very much in the same vein as we talked about earlier with the issue of hurricane season. If we lose a chunk of our workforce, that would be, could be devastating. And then I also get really concerned about, you know, as, you know, we lose, we lose work, we would lose workforce, but then we also have to pay overtime to backfill those positions. So it's costing the taxpayers money because of that as well that didn't need to be expended. So I guess that, those are my comments. And also to the children, I mean, I think it really is important to know that what we're doing is, is trying to create and protect them at this point in time because they cannot, as you said, Commissioner McKinley, they cannot be vaccinated. And by law, they have to go to school. They have to be around other people. So we have to do everything in our power, and I applaud the school board for decisions that they've made to try and keep our children safe. Because they, by law, have to, have to be around other people. They can't, they can't just isolate. So I, we do, we have to do, everybody has to do what we can. This is a community-wide, it's a countrywide, it's a patriotic thing to do, is for all of us to come together and to beat the virus and not, and not allow the virus to beat us.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. And just my closing comments, since I reiterate the comments of my colleagues on the board, and Commissioner McKinley has previously laid a very solid foundation for this action to be taken by the Board of County Commissioners. Just two quick points, though, with regards to the motion on the table and then the directive under that to obtain relevant and necessary data from the hospital system, the private hospital system, to be delivered to the Board of County Commissioners. It's important to me, and I doubt that Commissioner McKinley will object, but she'll let me know, it's important to me that we also get details and information on their comprehensive emergency management plans as to whether they've executed on it, do they intend to execute on it, what are their CEMPs, have they expanded the floor space in their ERs and ICUs, things of that nature, so that we have a better idea of what the true boundaries are of their hospital capacity system and their ability to respond. Is there any objection to that, Commissioner McKinley? And then with regards to the comments brought up by Commissioner Weiss and Commissioner Bernard relevant to our internal staff at the county commissioner and the county as a whole, certainly I think the board always endeavors to give the administrator as wide latitude as possible in executing on your executive duties. But as you pointed out, Madam Administrator, at some point, if there is a deficiency in fire rescue in terms of staffing or in Palm Tran or Water Utilities and all those important services that the county offers, it becomes our problem. And so I've spoken with Todd and I've spoken with the administrator on several occasions about utilizing all the resources that we have and to ensure that we have a safe and healthy workforce, absent of mandating the vaccine to our employees. And so I would like some ongoing data and updates to us, whether individually or to the board as a whole, on what is the status of vaccinations in our critical departments? What are the staffing shortages if they occur? How many employees are out sick, particularly in fire rescue and those other departments and divisions we discussed? And what are our efforts and what should they be in terms of ongoing testing? We've discussed Q testing, the Department of Health commented on it, I've read Mayo Clinic data that it's very effective, it comes back in 25 minutes. And so I would hate to see, as the positivity rate continues to rise, that those issues are exacerbated within our Palm Tran, Fire Rescue, Water Utilities and all those other departments that serve critical infrastructure for this county. So I think it's important that we're utilizing the technological advances that have occurred through COVID-19 to ensure the effectiveness and full staffing of our forces here in the county department. So with that said, the motion has been made by Commissioner McKinley pursuant to Section 9-35 that empowers the Board of County Commissioners to declare an emergency and to issue emergency directives therein. Those emergency directives have been authorized by the motion as previously stated, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bernard. I don't see any further comments by members of the board. And so we'll take a roll call vote just to ensure accuracy. We'll start with the maker of the motion, Commissioner McKinley.
Yes.
Commissioner Marino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernard.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks. And District 3 votes yes, so that is seven to zero. We look forward to that, that order being executed and published. And we appreciate everyone's time and efforts here today on this COVID-19 update. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Some positive news, we will be taking a lunch break today as the Board of County Commissioners.
I just got the numbers for the kids.
But with, unless the board objects, there is some public business that we can continue into until the 12 o'clock hour. So that concludes item four on public, special presentations. We're going out of public hearings, which have been noted for 9:30 a.m. They start on page 88 and they're under Agenda Item 5.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive and file proof of publication.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, second by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor, all opposed, we'll receive and file the proof of publication.
Mayor, I'm going to move approval of 5A1, A, B, C, and D.
If we can just table that motion for just a moment, Vice Mayor, we do have public comment.
Okay.
And then I'll come back to you on, on your motion. This is Office of Financial Management and Budget, found on page 88, regarding Board And I'll turn it over to our county engineer, Mr. Ricks, for presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Commissioners. This item was pushed to today's hearing for a public hearing, and this is related to the MSTU special assessment for, for a improvement to Bishop Road. This process went through the normal protocol that was requested by one of the residents in January 2016 for a potential improvement to a road. We subsequently surveyed the residents and over 51% said yes. And so we submitted an item for the board consideration September 13, 2016, for potential consideration of a project. The board authorized to start the design and potential advertising of this project. And so that was done. On July 10, 2018, we informed the residents about where we're at with the cost and also surveyed the residents again. Different results in terms of the survey, but it was rolling more for informational only. And six said yes, one said no, I'm sorry, six said no, one said yes on the informational survey in July 2018. At that time, the board said proceed with the awarding of that project and proceed with the construction of the project. The project was completed April 2019. And now before you is a request, and I'll turn it over to Sherri in terms of having add this to the tax rolls.
And this Agenda item allows us to add these assessments, along with the nuisance abatement rule, to our tax bills to collect these assessments.
Very good. Barring questions from members of the board at this time, we're going to go now to public comment. Commissioner Bernard, you recognize.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We have three public comment cards. The first person will be William Holt, followed by William Maxwell, and then Steve Goldberg.
Mr. Holt, you recognize her for three minutes.
I'm actually Mr. Goldberg, will I speak first if you don't mind, please?
Sure, just state your name for the record.
Sure. I'm also going to be asking if we can have more time, we hired counsel, Ellen Bogdanoff at Becker Partners.
If counsel, if you have counsel here and they want to make comments, they should submit a comment, they should submit a comment card.
No, no, the counsel is not here. Counsel, we just received some of the data from, from the offices that we request on a, you know, for the information that we needed to pass on to counsel. Counsel received that.
It looks like you're getting into your comments, so could you just state your name so that we can keep accurate record of who's speaking?
My name is Steve Goldberg.
Goldberg, okay. All right, so you recognize for three minutes.
I also requested some extra time, please, if I can, one minute.
The, get through your comments, then if we have questions, we'll follow up with you, sir.
Okay, so on or about 2014, the beginning of 2015, our road was being destroyed by an illegal act at the end of our street known as 412 Big Tall Pines Road. They were opened up an illegal egress to the road. Mr. Maxwell, who is here to speak also, was not a property owner but a member of our organization and decided to call because of the adjacent road Alexander asked for millings to be placed on the road. That was, that was actually done. The process was started by the MSTU, as stated in our previous emails and on the 2016-16 letters, were mailed out to the owners on the street. There is no confirmation that the entire street did receive letters which included a petition to see if there was any interest to the project. The letter suggested a deadline but was not mandatory as its importance. On 512-16, the informal deadline was used to obtain confirmation as the interest proceeding with the formalities of seeing the bids cost and true consequence of going forward to be. The vote was five to two for yes, two against, and return. However, the entire north end of the street was the only one that voted, the entire southern end of the street did not. That should immediately have shown red flags that they did not receive the initial letters as it was not sent out, but only in normal mailings and not sent out into, you know, certified mail. At this time, for next two years, the street was laden with millings and the destruction of the street has continued. There is code enforcement went out and has fined that property of the illegal egress, still to this day has not been cured, in excess of $150,000. On 6/9/18, final petitions were sent to the property owners. On 7/6/18, petitions were received, property owners were fully against, and one property owner, again, 412 Pines, the illegal egress was four, it was eight to one. And as he may have stated, that it was for informational only, only. However, under Section 2630-2, there's supposed to be a mandatory public information benefiting all property owners that'll be notified and informational meeting to be held one week prior to the public hearing required under Section 2630.3 in a division. That was never done at all. We believe that if that was done, that the, that the people on the street would have been fully informed and fully went ahead and understood what was going on. There was, we just received recently the minutes of the videos, and in this minute, Madam Mayor McKinley was, was there. She was kind of looking at this and saying to herself, you know, why are we here? We got this information here, the folks on the road did not want this to happen, why are we here? However, Commissioner Velecce at the time, his only concern was the money spent and went ahead and actually said out loud, hey, why do these guys get a free look at what's going on? To me, I find that, I find that to be abhorrent, that we should get a free look of to see, since you guys are placing a priority lien on our property for 20 years. You know, we looked at this and went into the next hearing, and at that hearing, that was looked at and, and that's why we're here today. So the crucial step of no information meeting was completely missed. They, they went ahead and having, you know, looked at, you know, the mailings that went out, and even the, most of the people that were there, even Mr. Ricks and everybody looked at this and said, you know, maybe we should relook, and even Mr. Velecce.
Sir, your time has expired, we do have some follow-up questions.
Sure.
I'm sorry to have to limit you, but those are the rules of the board as they've been passed.
No worries.
Is the road paved already?
The road has been paved, correct.
And it's my understanding that, I mean, property owners have paid, some of them have paid in full already for, for the paving of that road. I'm going to direct that to staff.
Some of the property owners have.
I'm sorry, you interrupted hers, so if I direct a question to a particular person, please let them answer.
Okay.
So have members of this community already paid in full portions of what is owed?
Yes, about five have.
It sounds like the gentleman is making some arguments that the process wasn't done correctly. Is there any light you can have shed on that for us, please?
Well, I've got Morton and Sandra from my staff, but we, initial notification was sent to all the residents. And so Morton, could you talk about the process a little bit?
Morton? Morton?
Mr., you can use this microphone over here, sir.
Good morning. My name is Morton Rose, Director of Road and Production Division. Yes, we did send notifications out to all the residents, there were 14 notifications that went out. And we also did follow up with a separate notification that we consider to be like a second petition wherein the actual cost of the improvement was provided to each resident. And they were also invited to the public hearing that was held by this board at that time.
Okay, and that, when was that? And what was the outcome of that, I guess what you're calling informal poll?
So, so at the, what we call the second or final petition, we did receive responses from, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of the residents. None of the previous residents that originally voted yes changed their vote. There were also a repeat of residents just not responding.
Which then don't get included in the outcome of...
Yeah, so what typically happens is that we provide the results from these votes that we received. You know, those are usually provided through the county engineer's office to the Board. So, you know, each Board member gets briefed on the findings, and our, you know, that information is typically available before we have the public, the final public hearing, wherein the vote, wherein the Board decides whether or not to proceed with the project.
Okay, and what were the results delivered to the Board at that second go-around?
Yeah, at that point, we identified that what happened in the initial petition, and what happened in the following petition, which was, there were one, two, three, four, five yeses, and two nos in the first petition. In the second petition, there were one, two, three, four, five, six nos, mostly from people who had not responded before. And of course, there were, there were yeses, the same people that responded in the original one. Only one responded again as yes. So, it's hard to say, to explain, but the, there was only one response from the people who had responded yes before, and that person said yes again.
Okay.
The others were, the others only...
So it was like seven to one against it, then?
No, there was, there were, the people who responded no in the second petition did not respond in the first petition.
I understand that, but what was the aggregate total of votes in the second round, and what were their denominations?
Oh, we, I mean, there was no aggregate done at that time. We just two separate reports. Just two separate reports.
Okay.
So there was a first initial petition, we reported that. Second petition, we reported that information to the Board. We didn't, the process is not, is never ever to aggregate it, because...
Well, how many votes were there in the second petition, total?
In the second petition, there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven responses.
Okay.
And six out of those seven responses voted no.
And then one yes.
And then one yes.
So it was six to one no. Okay, and then going back to professional staff, what is our obligation as a Board of County Commissioners at this point?
Just, let me just clarify again. The initial petition was a survey of the residents, and the requirement is 51% of the respondents noted before, comes before the Board for decision. So we actually, we surveyed the 14. We had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven responses. Of the seven, we had, we had six yeses, I mean, I mean, five yeses. So five out of seven were yeses. And so September 13, the public hearing was, was, was held, and Ward gave direction to proceed with the design and bidding of the project. Upon the finished design and the bid results, we submitted another petition, just like Mr. Morton indicated, and we surveyed, and of the 14, only got seven back. Of the seven, six were no, one was yes. And those results were conveyed to the Board, and the Board made a decision to proceed with the construction of the project.
Okay. And then, so is this Board now tasked with making a decision whether to formally assess those remaining properties that have not paid for this improvement?
No, if I may, if I may add, to clarify, the assessment was already legally imposed, and the properties leaned as of the 2018 Board meeting, when the Board did evaluate and met as an equalizing board per the ordinance, and considered objections at that time, and this non-required second petition vote. And so the assessment was legally imposed, and it's been a valid and biting assessment since then. At this point, the question is only putting this assessment on the tax roll.
Is that essentially a ministerial decision?
I can let the attorney answer that?
Yes, it is at this point. It's a collection issue.
It sounds like the policy decisions have been previously made by prior Boards at prior meetings, and if we don't execute on putting these on the tax rolls, we're just not doing our duty to collect the funds that have been expended in the benefit of this property, these properties.
And one other item to note, the section that was cited regarding the informational meeting, the ordinance provides an option, which is what was followed here. In lieu of an informational meeting, there could be informational letters that are sent, which is what was done here by the Department. So the ordinance and the procedures were followed. There's no irregularities that we've been able to find, whereas the whole project followed the procedures per the ordinance.
Okay, well, there are other members of the public that would like to speak to this. I'll recognize Commissioner Weiss at this time, but we'll have the other speakers come to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my, my concern about this is that you have people thinking they're being able to, and I assume, you know, obviously, the Board at the time heard their input based on their, on their vote, but I think, to me, it just really, and I don't know, you know, I understand there's changes being contemplated, but if you give people an opportunity to vote on something, and they don't agree, that there needs to be some kind of clearing of that, of what's happening, because we, it's, obviously, you know, you followed the procedure, you had the, that come out, but I, is that something that you're contemplating on how we do this in the future, so?
Yes, sir, we are, we are looking to revise the procedure, make it more clear, especially for something like this, so it doesn't occur again to the misinterpretation in terms of the results.
All right, further into public, public discussion, Commissioner Bernard.
Mr. Mayor, we have William Holt, followed by William Maxwell.
If I may, Mr. William Holt wants to...
Sir, your time has expired, and we have to keep these proceedings...
He wants to defer his comments to me.
I can't, I can't give you more time than I give the other speakers. You've made your comments, and I'm going to ask you to please remove yourself from the podium at this point in time.
Good morning, I'm Mr. Holt. Can, I have lung problems. Can Mr. Goldberg, please, take my time?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Problem, yes, sir. Can you re-up his time?
Thank you.
Thank you. You're recognized, sir, for three minutes.
Thank you. So as we were talking about, actually, the vote was, was eight to one. Eight, eight were nos. Mr. Holt did show up at the meeting, as were provided into the notice and so forth, and showed his two votes. So it was eight to one to no, and just want to make that clear. As far as the informational meeting, it's written pretty clear into the statutes that that had to take place. It's, you know, for us to go ahead, and I'm glad to see that the MSTU or the OFMB, whoever puts out these ads, will go ahead and make it clear in the future. I do know that, that, you know, you're asking us to go ahead and to vote on a, on a bid of some sort of, you know, road building without any knowledge of to what cost. The cost did exceed the original notice that did come out. It exceeded, as they said in the meeting, they said, well, it went over five, six percent. Well, that's not true. It went over six percent of the high and not the low. That immediately stopped. Again, when Mr., you know, when we came out here and so forth, Mr. Holt did raise his hands up at that 218 meeting and said, we've never received any notice, nor did anybody on the south side of the street. It was evident by the vote. They just did not vote. They did not get the letter. There was nothing that quantified that said that they received any letters or notices, and only the north side of the vote happened. When everybody started realizing what was going on, the entire southern part of the street showed up and voted no. The vote was eight to one, not six to one, and so forth. At that time, there should have been another clearing, like you said, you know, Commissioner Weiss, and we should have went ahead and seen exactly what that was. But at that point, the, you know, that, the ship was already sailed, and so forth. We're asking for a lot. Now, you know, at the end of the day, 412 Pines is being assessed a fine. They're being assessed in $50,000. You know, we wanted to go ahead and take a look at that. We feel we're not owed anything. We did want to make a goodwill compromise, and because Commissioner Veleche was saying, well, listen, they shouldn't get a free look. Why are we paying for this? That was $75,000 in your original offer, you know, to look at the roads. If we go ahead and look at this, we're willing to go ahead and pay for the $75,000 as members of the street, and along, you will be made whole by taking a collection when you once satisfied that lien at 412 of $150,000. Now procedurally, there's a lot of problems. Like I said, we've retained counsel of Ellen Bogdanoff of Becker and lawyers, and, you know, we're going to look into this. You know, this procedurally is wrong. When you look at the meetings, and if you guys watched the meetings that started 49 minutes going forward, everybody was confused. A lot of the stuff, that's things, that's being said here, it's just a lot of dancing around some of the real issues. The real issue is there was a massive failure of how the street was handling the communication to this project. They put it out there in the paper. Nobody reached the paper today. You guys use Twitter. You guys said it here because of COVID and so forth. Why is it not put out there electronically to these folks? I mean, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And then I think we have one more speaker following.
Yeah, that'll be Mr. William Maxwell.
Good morning, or should I, good afternoon, thank you. He's touched on most of what I had written down here to say, so I guess I'll put a finer point on a few things. The thing that's actually in question here is the, is the first vote, and I think you guys got that with the last thing he said there, is that literally the entire south side of the street, we, and we represent two of the properties on the south side of the street, didn't get a chance to vote. We never got the letter for the first petition. And that's really, to put too fine a point on it, that's, that's really the issue. We didn't get to say anything until the second vote, which is when he, Mr. William Holt, came in person and cast two votes, which is what makes it an eight to one on the second vote, not a six to one. Like I said, I mean, there's something wrong. Somebody, these weren't, the letters aren't sent out by certified mail, or sent regular mail. Anything could have happened. Like I said, we didn't get a notification, and according to the people that I've talked to on the south side of the street, they're also, they never got a notification either. So for the first vote, something went wrong, maybe with the mail. I don't know what, but it seems like the method by which we get this information to everyone is antiquated, I hate to say. But like I said, he's touched almost everything that I had to say. He is right about that 412 Tall Pines LLC. They did, this whole thing happened because we used to have a dirt road. They made an illegal driveway onto that road, the end of the road, and they would drive semi trucks up and down this residential neighborhood and destroy the road. So the reason, and originally when I first called, I called looking into getting millings, maybe seeing, hey, you know, what would it take to get the road paved? That's kind of what led it, led to all this. You know, at that point, I really don't know what else to say, you know what I mean? They've been, from what he's looked into, they've been penalized for building that illegal driveway onto Bishop Road, and this whole thing has kicked off basically because they've, they're to this day still driving semi trucks down that road every day. And it's, you know, they've got a Tall Pines address. So, but that's, that's all I can really add to this. I really appreciate your time. I sincerely do. I know that you guys have much bigger fish to fry, but it is, I'm really grateful for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your comments. It would appear to me, Commissioner McKinley, you want to make some comments?
I have a question for staff. So how much of this is the actual cost of the road, and how much of this is fees or interest or other such costs?
Well, the total assessment is 309,000. The construction project, Morton, just...
Wait, don't do it.
The construction project, based on the Board item figures, was 331,500 was the first estimate. That resulted in a per budding, per foot budding of each of the properties fronting the road at 249, 46 per foot, per property. But the total assessment was actually lower, at $233 per foot. So it was actually lower than the original estimate.
So about that, to answer your question, Commissioner, is really the cost of the construction of the road. So 310,000, I'm going to get the total assessment figures here, 39,860, and based upon the figures that Morton just gave, and to the actual cost, is pretty close to the actual cost of the construction of the road that we're assessing.
So the assessment doesn't include any collection fees or interest or penalties?
So if you pay 100% today, there's no interest on it, and half of the people have done that. And so those who haven't paid 100%, where it would be added, they would pay five and a half percent interest over 20 years, because they don't want to pay 100% today. They've, they would defer it over a 20-year period. There's no collection agency cost at this point.
All right, well, Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized, sir.
Is there any provision, since there's the penalty that's being assessed to the property owner who's illegally created the egress, is there any way to utilize those funds to offset the cost of this?
I'd have to check what the county attorney's office about that. I don't know.
No, I believe you're referring to a separate code enforcement matter, perhaps for that, and that's separate and apart from the special assessment to these specially benefited properties that receive the benefit under this ordinance for this project.
But the people that are getting, that are, that are being in violation are getting a benefit from this road, and yet they're not assessed. Their property is not on the frontage, so it's not assessed.
I don't know about the specifics of that, of that case, and I think that that's the code enforcement matter, and that's how that was handled.
Will you give us an opportunity?
Okay.
Good morning. Unfortunately, code enforcement, we can't compel them. I can't just go simply block the road. So what we are doing, we are fining them, we are leaning them. Sooner or later, they're going to come in with some sort of transaction and one forgiveness, and then obviously, all of this will come out in the record. The funds, the code enforcement funds, whatever fines we do get, just goes into the general fund, and that can be spent however the, I guess, the Board or the Administrator wants. But that's where we stand. Unfortunately, it's just, I just can't compel compliance. I can just only fine and gently nudge them as hard as we can to come into compliance. But all this will be part of the record. They will come at some point in time to try to get a fine modification, and all these facts will be brought up, and then that's when these decisions can be made. But as of now, our hands are tied just to the daily fines that they're occurring.
So Madam Administrator, would there be any way that we could, in fact, apply those fines to reduce the assessment on the other property owners?
That's a difficult question to answer, Commissioner. I do empathize with the landowners. However, we don't know when they're going to need to come in and settle up, especially if the, if their unit is homesteaded. And we don't know what we'll end up settling for, so I don't know how we make any adjustments. And I need to talk to legal and see what precedent we'd be setting if we did take that action. I can get back with the Board with the final response.
I mean, it seems to me like we should, you know, that if, and it would come later, obviously, when they, when they would pay it, that then it could be refunded back to the other folks, that, I mean, a lot of this has, unfortunately, this is, you know, it's a, this is a long time case, and I don't want to drag this out any longer than necessary, but it seems like we should be able to have that latitude to be able to do something like that.
Again, I think we, we've got a number of code enforcement cases which impact neighbors. We've never taken that step. Please give me an opportunity to go look at it and come back to the Board.
Okay, but yeah, this is specific as, as it relates to this roadway being improved, so.
I'll go look at it and come back to the Board.
So I think where we're at then is that the road has been paved. There have been property owners that have already paid their assessment. For this issue to be ripe, for appeal to the Circuit Court, which I attempt, I suspect they're... they're going to do, we need to go ahead and do our public duty and put this on the tax roll. Tangent to that, Commissioner Weiss, is your idea to buy down the assessment through what we see causally linked to it, which is that code and, code violation which has resulting fine. So, I would, I would ask, and I would join Commissioner Weiss in examining that issue, but I do think we have a duty here today to, to move forward. I understand the frustrations. We will probably be defendant in court at some time, but the policy decisions have been made by previous boards, and if we don't go ahead and move this on to the tax rolls, then it will actually hold up your ability to seek redress in the system of justice. So, is there a motion? Motion's been made on 5A1, A, B, C, and D by Vice Mayor Weinroth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bernard. Any further comment by members of the board? All in favor? All opposed? Item passes seven to zero. Thank you for your time, gentlemen. We will go ahead and recess now for 45 minutes. Is that acceptable? So, we will return back here around 110, 115. We'll, we'll resume at 115. The board is in recess. Thank you.